Mayor Protan Bill Lobo.
Here.
Councilmember McGovern.
Here.
Councilmember Styler is absent. Councilmember McClabb.
Here.
Councilmember Clinton.
Here.
And I am Mayor Gleis. If you'd rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And to the Texas flag. Honor to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. And please remain standing for the invocation. Dear gracious heavenly Father, Lord God, we thank you for our beautiful community. And we are thankful that we have this problem that we have to figure out. Lord God, we just pray that you give us discernment in our governing. And we just pray that, um, that we can come to a really good conclusion that will be helpful to everyone involved. Lord God, we do thank you for the gift of salvation in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
And I would like, also like to add on to that, if everybody would still remain standing, please. Water is the giver and sustainer of life. Water is sacred and spiritual. We should embrace the stewardship of the San Marcos River in Martindale and lead from a spiritual mandate to ensure that the sacred water will always be protected, available, and sufficient.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we do have a couple of public comments that are not about the workshop. Um, so first, Mary Beth Harper. If you could stand at this podium right here.
Okay, first, San Marcos planning and zoning is met last night and they talked about 300 plus homes built up here on the loop and Staples Road that still might track, yeah, 300 homes. And I don't know where the sewer or waters coming from.
And Marcus, I think, yeah.
Anyway. Or run off into the river. Okay, then also I've got something from Housing and Urban Development. This is a notice to build in the floodplain. There's 336 apartments. I like San Marcos makes more apartments. And this is on North Interstate 35 between the Blanco River, which is five close to Interstate 107. Again, 336 apartments, parking lot, again, four runoff. And again, the reason I mention that, that's Blanco River, the Blanco River is the main cause of flooding here. Okay, also, San Marcos has a thing to review their application to discharge nine million gallons per day of sewage into the San Marcos River. And I hope things, they just came out this week. I'll send that to you first.
Please, thank you.
Good question. Okay, the second part is about the library. Okay, the special call, city council meeting, that was something even library didn't know about that, so just let y'all know. Uh, and I hope we're still negotiating because there's lots of parts to that, uh, that need to be fixed. Okay, anyway, this is about some of the programs that the library is offering. Our summer reading program has doubled our expectations. Uh, the tie dye shirt day was a huge success as well as the story time this last Saturday. Uh, the next programs are on August 5th, it's Pause With The Cause, on the 19th Library Day, and on September 2nd, Mermaids. Uh, the actual mermaids from the Mermaid Society, San Marcos. Uh, they come down, they read a book, uh, do some activities with the kids, they sing songs. Anyway, it's, it's really neat. Um, and the grant from Save The Children and also Dollar Journal, some reading program. Every Thursday at 11:00 AM, a storytime, uh, they read several books, they do, uh, all kinds of activities, sing songs, and do part projects. And also every Friday, this is for adults, at 11:00 AM, uh, reading conversation. And that's paid for with St. David's, uh, St. Age Friend. Okay, um, September the 16th, for 91, okay, we're having our second annual health and wellness fair. Uh, we have a half-hell and bus to do free eye exams. Uh, we have blood pressure checks, and I think a bunch of y'all need blood pressure checks. Uh, the dietitian, physical therapy, we have all kinds of people coming in. Um, uh, then on October 20th, for us, Jared, well, it's the Fall Family Festival. We've got a bouncy house, play rides, games for all childrens, for all ages. And I think that's the same day that the, uh, San Marcos River Foundation has something too. Okay. And I don't want to be rude, but I have to go some way else.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Harper. Um, the next public comment is by Sonia Villalobos.
Hey y'all, so I live on Skull Road. Um, hopefully you were lucky enough to be on the email list of Mr. Goings and receive the email. If you did, I'm the she that he's referring to that's on city council. Um, I'm not only referred to as she, I'm a mother, I'm a wife. I have a daughter that was on this river constantly. She's now on the Coast Guard and just came back today, called me before this meeting. And I also have a daughter who's in environmental science in Washington right now. There was some misleading information on that email. Today you're gonna find out, and I'm not gonna get into that. But what I am gonna part with you is I'm thankful that you're here today. You're gonna listen to the reasons why I responded to each one of those emails. My base for responding to those are valid, which you will see today. And I don't appreciate being referred to in an email with false information. If anybody had anything that they wanted to say to me after I responded to you, you could have done so. If it's a concern about the students, my students who were murdered there, you could have also responded to that as well. That's not a basis why I'm saying it should remain closed. But in the proximity where I lived, if you would have heard the gunshots, if you would have drove by and seen them on the ground, if you would have known that your students didn't graduate, you would wanna know why it's important to those families to have a voice in those memorials, okay? Another thing is, we, what I'm gonna do with that comment that was said about me and all the misinformation that was done, is I'm gonna let it go like the water. I'm not gonna feed into it. But what I can do is I can pray for you, I respect you, and I thank you for having the group that you did, and I'm sorry that you were misinformed.
Thank you. Uh, the next comment is Bill Gleis.
Uh, yes, um, my name is, uh, Bill Gleis. Husband of the mayor. So I'm speaking truly for myself. Uh, I spoke on this issue, um, several years ago. And it has to do with the funding of our public library. And, um, I am vehemently supporting Martindale taxpayer funds to fund the library. I am the president of the Martindale Volunteer Fire Institute. I have an obligation to raise about $30,000 a year, and I do it, um, for our department. We don't ask for anything from this city. Uh, so many, many years ago, they gave us 100 a month sporadically, uh, many years ago. We do have, uh, we do have funding, but we're $40,000 short every year. And we provide an incredible service to this community. I think if, if you put us on the list of groups that provide for this city, we would be probably number one. I mean, very close to it, right? Not the library for sure. Uh, I believe that our library provides a small number of services to Martindale taxpayers. Our librarian will try to provide that information, but my guess will be that $24,000 they are asking for will be a or will be a large amount for each regular agent. I'm thinking probably 200 people in this town that actually use it, right? Uh, I suggest that we wean the library from our city funds and let them raise their own funds. Now, I don't wanna cut them off because, um, we've chosen to provide for them for several years, which we shouldn't have ever done. But, um, but I feel real strongly that they need to wean themselves and they need to provide their own funding for the library. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, are there any more comments that are not related to the workshop? I've got a lot of comments, but it looks like they're all for the workshop, so we should start the workshop.
Mayor. Mayor, we received 33 public comments via email. Uh, all, all those have been, uh, delivered to the city clerk for the record.
Okay.
Uh, Jared, of those emails, who were for parking?
I'd, I'd, I would say overwhelmingly it was, it was to allow parking. I don't know what the.
It was, it was close to 100%, and almost all of them said they had no problem, uh, paying for that, so.
I don't have any reason to disagree with that assessment.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so what I would like to do, is the police chief here?
Uh, yeah.
Um, so, one of the things that I've been thinking about quite a bit is what is the problem for the city of Martindale? We've got a lot of comments about parking and all of that, but one of the things that we've been concerned about, mainly is solving some of the safety issues. We, um, have people that go too fast along Northwest River Road and children coming from between cars and stuff. So I have asked the police chief what he thought would work at that intersection. So I'm gonna let him present that to start with.
Good evening, everyone. This is pretty much my proposal, uh, for safety. What it would do, uh, we would paint a lane up Skull. So I'm sorry, my, the arrows don't, uh, work on there. But, uh, so if you come across Skull Bridge coming into Martindale, make the road to the right, which is shield crossing, one-way only, and that's coming up from the bridge. That'll do two things. It would slow people coming down off Quell Run and just driving fast across there and going down across there. So if there's kids or there's people, um, anyone out there, it would slow everything down and, and create that. It would make it a safer route for people coming back into Martindale to the city limits, or into the city itself, downtown area. If someone's coming across the bridge and going up and going left, they can go, still go to the left and make that left turn there, or they could turn right, doesn't really matter. And then coming down, you come down from that other side on Skull itself, on Skull Road itself, and make that intersection a three-way stop. That would slow everyone down coming, uh, south on Northwest River Road, down Northwest River Road to the, to where the population, population area is, as well as coming across from Quell Run and coming out going north. It would slow everyone down because not be, people aren't gonna be speeding as they're coming up to a stop sign, so they'll have to slow down beforehand. Uh, again, then on the, uh, on the no parking area on the one-way, where we make shield crossing a one-way, make that right-hand side a loading and unloading zone. That's what it's been all along. There's a sign actually there that says loading and unloading. And if we could paint the roads and get the roads striped properly, you could have that and still go up there. Shield crossing at one point is only 16 feet wide, so it's really not, really not conducive for two-way traffic on there anyway. So I think if we're able to do this, uh, I think this would save a lot of safety stuff. If anyone's got any questions, I'll answer.
I, I have one.
Yes, sir.
Um, on the, let's call it the downstream side road and the upstream side, I guess that, that's easier. One of the comments that have been made, well, I'm gonna say two things. As you're coming up the road and then would look to the left where we proposed parking, it's harder for people to see through or see the oncoming traffic because all those cars are, are parked there in the parking lot on the left, that's one thing. And then where you propose the two-way street there, I've noticed as you're coming up the hill, it is so steep there. And, and you could see as cars have been making that right turn there that they've been scraping. It's like a big bump there. And, and I, um, I just don't think it's wide enough there for, for two lanes.
So, so I'll answer that question. So, normal roads, normal highway roads are 12 foot wide. That intersection is 47 feet across. If we were to paint an actual road and move everything to the left, that would keep everyone from driving across that steep area and, and making that right turn with sleep, steep in the gravels drawn up. So we, uh, my plan for that is, is to move everything, we painted that lane, it's the actual lane, so they're painted and people can see where to drive. Then you can go there and use, we could probably put in the, uh, little pylons, the breakaway pylons, and have an area on that side so no one cuts across that, uh, into that high area where it's really steep.
And then just so you know, I asked Doug Burnside to, to come. He's our, uh, I mean, he is the Roads and Bridge Supervisor, Administrator of Guadalupe County, so he's, he's here as well. Thank you.
See, and, and Guadalupe County does a great job. They paint, it's no, no passing all the way, and they paint their lines all the way up to the edge of the bridge to Martindale City Limit Side on, on our side. So they, they strike their roads. Our roads are not striped there. If we were able to go in and stripe that intersection and, and, and paint it out where it would be actually lanes, I think it would work a whole lot better. People would see, you could physically see where your travel lane is.
But they're not supposed to make a right there. Your objective is to.
Yeah, the, the objective is to not have someone come up there and make a right on the Northwest River Road. They would be making a left off of Skull. They would make their right on the shield crossing and make their right there at that interception.
Yes, sir.
So, part of the reason some people are here is because of the fly fishing outfitters who have trailers. But also, we're in a rural community with livestock trailers and all kinds of big trailers. If somebody's heading northwest on River Road and takes a left onto Skull, how are they gonna get around? There's no way with a big trailer, I mean, above 16 foot that you could get around.
So, you really can? Because that road is, like I say, it's 47 feet wide at the mouth of that road.
But if I have a 24-foot livestock trailer and I'm coming up and trying to go left onto Skull?
Yeah, we've actually seen semis make that turn.
Yeah.
Semis have made that turn.
Well, if, if the people are far enough, far enough back.
Well, you have a stop sign right there now, so it's gonna be a three-way stop. So if you pull up with your trailer and there happens to be a car there, you could almost wait till that car moves and then make your turn. I don't, I don't see a long line of traffic being there in your, in your way to make that turn.
I mean, I just, I know from hauling a 24-foot livestock trailer, that's pretty difficult, but.
I saw someone else that had a hand raised.
I, I guess, Doug, I got a question. Doug, I got a question for you. Uh, on the Skull, Skulls Road, I know, I know that you have no parking from the top of the hill down to the bridge. I don't see any no parking signs past the top of the hill.
On our side?
Yes.
I would have to, anytime you put up an enforceable sign, it has to go through court and there has to be your request for it. There's gotta be the, the litigation it goes through, otherwise if you write a ticket on it, it's unenforced.
Oh, let me, can you explain that to me, sir? So you do, so somebody parks up there, say, in that parking zone. There's, so we got, I guess I got two questions. We, it's clarified that past the top of the hill, they can park on the side of the road because there's no parking.
Because there's no parking.
But from the bridge to the top of the hill where they have no parking, if they do park there, what is, where the ramifications?
Well, they can get a ticket.
So what happens then?
Get a ticket and pay a fine.
Do they tow them away?
If you tow it away.
Okay.
That's, and, and that's one of the biggest problems with, um, enforceable signs right now is the lack of proper law enforcement. They're, they're busy doing other things. And it falls down the list of, of what is, they're gonna go out there and take care of. We do not have a tow truck to go and tow people away. We, they, our sheriffs, they will write tickets, it's the first thing, which, once again, it's, it's, it's a fine.
Another question. How many, how many deputy sheriffs you have for that area?
I don't have an answer to that. I can just stand up for it.
Okay, appreciate it. Okay.
I do know it's, uh, it's, they're, they're short, just like road and bridge, it's hard when it's short. Getting people to work anymore. I think everybody here that shows up cares about things. We all know it's tough, you need to work anymore.
So is it make a Denver spin on, on the county line? We're right on the county line. So is it, is it more of an issue, say you're in the center of the county, Guadalupe County, or you're on 120th Route?
Yeah. No, I mean, they, they send, they have the deputies, the outpatient, they're, they're all over the county in due time. But if there's something that happens or there's car chase for some reason or other, or something.
So my next question, how many, how many deputy sheriffs do you have for Guadalupe County total?
I don't have an answer to that one.
I'd like to have that too. Okay, thank you.
All right, so the city of Martindale is currently in negotiations with a towing company. So one, uh, at some point, we will be putting up signs on Northwest River Road so that they're not parking along the road anymore. And that's why we're proposing parking in the old parking lot. It will relieve, um, parking more safely. Um, there already is an ordinance in place that there is not supposed to be any parking on Northwest River Road. And so we've just been allowing people to do that. We're not enforcing that so much right now. But, um, this is a problem we need to solve. If we allow some parking, 15 or 20 spots, that would alleviate people going parking on the Skull Road where it's not very safe.
Yes, so will there be, there be any sidewalks for the people that walk down that hill? If someone's taking a big turn or people come rushing down the hill, which is kind of blind in certain areas. So if someone's walking up the hill, someone comes speeding down the hill, where's the sidewalk? What's the situation there?
Right, that would be a city council question, not, not a police question.
Yeah, what is the answer?
We, we don't have any proposed sidewalks at this point in time. It takes money and we don't have the money. We'll have to look for a grant.
Yes, sir.
So the expectation is that traps would move from Skull Road onto the shield crossing if you're turning right?
Correct.
But that's also a loading and unloading zone too?
Yeah, so there'd be enough room to, to, for loading and unloading only on the right-hand side, and you can turn and safely pass those cars. So they would be parked, it'd be easier to pass a car park, passing a car that's parked the same way you're traveling. You can't legally park 30 feet from a stop sign, so that, that's 30 feet coming down that hill and 30 feet back up towards the residential zone, and then 30 feet, uh, south of, of Northwest River Road. You can't park 30 feet from the stop sign.
But if they're unloading and loading as, as you suggested, in the other lane of that road of traffic, they're in carrying their uh, boat or their kayak from that space down where at Skull Bridge or carrying it back up, thus obstructing traffic or creating, and, well, let, let me think though, because the conservation easement that's already been set up on the Guadalupe County side, doesn't that suffice as a place for unloading and, and, and loading?
I'm probably solely, I don't care what they do on Guadalupe County side.
Oh, you're providing this as a city?
I'm providing for Martin, city of Martin.
City of Martin.
Oh, okay, so this has nothing, this is nothing to do to, well then where are those people gonna put their boats in, in and out of the water?
So right now, currently, if you go there on the right-hand side, there's been a, a loading and unloading zone there all this time. It's not safe. Uh, if someone pulled up there and parked with that sign that says loading and unloading right now, they would be parking on the roadway because there's two-way traffic there. So someone would have to come up and stop. If there was a car coming down shield crossing from Northwest River Road.
But we're adding more unloading and offloading though to the conservation easement spot that's already been designated.
What I've observed on the Caldwell County side, on the, like, if you were gonna go across the bridge, people are kind of making a way to get down to the river right there. There's even a flat area if you go and look that, where they've been kind of camping out. There's a way to take a boat, boat down that way. And then on the other side, even though it's a steep bank, um, we could, as a city, make it so that people could drop their boats into the river on the Caldwell County side.
On the land that we own.
Yes.
So right here, there's that, that sign, and we could come here, you could safely park cars along this way for loading and unloading only. And cars could come up and turn right and come right past it and make it safely, uh, pass them off. Uh, that's what my suggestion is for safety.
So to his point though, y'all would have to create a spot for them to put their boats in on that, on that donated green space, or else they're obstructing the roadway and they're going on to Texas Parks and Wildlife leased access.
Well.
Unless, unless.
That's our property. That's our property.
We're also working off of an ordinance that already exists from 2011.
It's already, it, we, it's right. Maybe we ought to explain that. You wanna explain the ordinance we already have on the books?
So there's an ordinance already in place that, that was written in 2011 that says that that's a loading and unloading zone. That's why that sign was put there.
Which is.
Shield Road is a loading and only, shield crossing is supposed to be loaded.
Basically where that sign says no parking, loading, unloading only. That is already a, a sign there and there's ordinance that.
So people can unload, and where do they put their boat in though? Are they crossing the bridge to put the boat in?
They're going down right there, they're crossing the street right there, or they're going to the other side.
Just, unless there's a trail or something for people to put the boat in on the city-owned property, it seems they're responsible to obstruct traffic over the type of wildlife properties.
Or I can ask that question. I, I looked at that spot and then we'd have, there is a, if you go down there and you look at that, if you're, if you're face of the bridge upstream, there is a gravel bar and there's a narrow area. You could trim a few trees back and there could be a access point to un and unload kayaks or canoes only. Now, you couldn't.
Facing upstream?
Uh, facing downstream of the bridge, downstream. A little spot there, it needs to be, that's actually, when they built the bridge, there's a little pore off of concrete. You could actually form steps. You'd have to cut little trees down and you make steps, and, and that would be, that would be, would let people access without even crossing the bridge.
Can, can someone point out where we're talking?
Yeah, can you pass that out, Tommy? Show.
Where we're talking about is right, right here in this area. This would be the loading and unloading zone, and this is an area that, uh, Mr. McClabb's talking about that's got the concrete pore off right here. That someone could come down, if they cleared this area, you could walk down there and pretty much launch right there.
Give me a, bring up that.
Well, we gotta discuss it. I just, it just, you know, it's just my, it's just my.
I would suggest if you're gonna do something, you don't have to cut into the.
Yeah, no, yeah, we wouldn't cut into it. We're, we're just.
We need to cut into it, don't we?
Oh, no, yeah. And, uh, and also, Doug, I got, I got a point for you. Once we start, once we put our towaway signs up, they're all coming to your county, just to clarify, because if we start, no, no, I mean, it's, people come.
No, they've been doing it.
Yeah, they have been. You have been, you've had people park on top of the hill. And yours, and you're, in that area from the top of the hill down to the bridge.
Yeah, there was nine, the, the homeowner there, I talked to her, she had nine cars parked on one side of the road two weeks ago on the weekend.
In the parking zones?
No, no, on Guadalupe's side before the, the Raca site, along the side of the road, nine cars were on, were on.
But there's no, no parking signs there. So, so I'll, I'll explain the difference. So what you explained earlier. So what the city of Martindale has done is on Northwest River Road, we have an ordinance now, and we got a contract with a tow company. They're gonna come, put their tow signs up, no parking, and they're gonna tow instantly, right? So if someone parks there on Northwest River Road in the no parking zone, they'll be towed away. Whereas currently, what we had before, we had the same things Guadalupe County has, is we can only go down there, write them a ticket, but we're writing the car a ticket because they're probably already gone. And once that one car is still there, other cars are gonna come line up and park. They're not gonna pay no attention to some ticket on the windshield, and they're just gonna line up. Now we got it where, uh, a tow company's gonna come tow them away. Guadalupe County's in the, in the bad spot where they're gonna be like we were. They can only go write that car a ticket. And they don't have a tow away, a contract with a tow company at this point. They don't have it at this point. It's definitely something, we, we can start a conversation to where, I mean, I wanna work with.
Yeah, just, just be aware, it's gonna rock and roll, dude. I'm telling you, because this place has been established as a hang since COVID.
Since COVID.
Since COVID and, and the previous bear shut down our parks, they all came here and the word is out, okay? And, you know, we're gonna talk about, let's talk about social media. Somebody put my name on social media that I wanted to shut the road down. And let me clarify something. I, as one city council person, has no. I as one city council person has no, I, I can't do that. It has to go through the city manager. It has to go through our mayor and I have to convince. Three, two other city council people. I cannot say I want to shut the road down and somebody put my name on social media. That I wanted to shut the road down. It was just an idea. I'm just saying.
Just for the record, he pointed me. It wasn't me.
So we're talking about social media. As Sonia said earlier, my name's been thrown out there, you know?
So that's what you get for sitting in front of the city administrator. I'm pointing hell.
Mr. Mafat was talking about right where the, pretty much the arrow is where the finger is. You can go down there. The city can clear that and come around, but coming back up the other way. You'll see that. Coming around that corner right there. If you get around that corner, you could actually park to that right side. There's the sign.
There you go. Being off all the brush, we would, could people could fuck time off there.
But then someone can move to the side, load and unload, then go move their stuff elsewhere, wherever they're going to park, wherever, wherever they're going to park.
He said, there's only places, other places for them to park. That's the whole point, right?
That's, that's another discussion.
Discussion.
Some people park ninety on the road up there. I parked up there before because there was no place else to park. The, the, the original Skull Road parking was all full. And I'm, I'm driving up the little hill there, waiting for the end of the new parking signs to end. And I parked, I don't know how far up the hill. You know, all the way from Skull Bridge. I did that once. I don't think it was illegal. It may have been. I didn't see a sign. But the whole point is people, people are trying to get to the river. Everybody should have equal access to the river. Especially if we're asking them to pay a fine, not a fine, paying for parking. They should all have equal access. This is all about people wanting to use the river. Okay?
Yeah.
Me and my dog, somebody else in there jet skier, whatever the.
Can't have jet skis.
Kayaks or whatever, you know?
Well.
Everybody, the fishermen want to fish.
Let's get back to the safety problem that we're having here. Uh, so I had a question. We have a three way stop. That will slow people down one way, this way. Yes.
So I know that usually at our city council meetings, we have engineers who look at our roads with the setbacks. And the required amount. Um, I do appreciate your willingness to create some solutions. But, um, we have Texas code section five four five point three oh one. That if supersedes our municipality rules as far as like setbacks. Are we sure that we're following our ordinances and our codes of what we're asking for citizens on this road?
We spoke to text doc.
Um, I'm asking about Texas code section five four five point three zero one.
Yeah.
And.
My intro, that's for highways.
But on this road, are they big enough for everything?
It's a city road.
City road.
So it doesn't matter how wide it is.
We're supposed to text on and they said we can do what we need to do.
Without a study, is our engineer going to sign off on the plan?
We are just in the planning stages.
We're having a workshop.
And we're having a workshop. So we'll.
So we would hire the engineer to do this study and then present it back to the citizens and then we would see it.
Well, bottom line, it's already ordinance. We already have an ordinance. It's already an ordinance.
If we require our citizens to follow our, our building and codes. Whenever they're building a subdivision, we have two residential, there's a residential house, a neighborhood, right? A slither of land that's right there. We have a residential area that's next. Those property values are going to go down. Has anybody talked to the residents there? You also need to ask yourself, is this, uh, parking, what I want a paid parking lot in my, in, in my front yard?
I'm talking about parking period. I'm talking about, uh, this roadway and the safety and everything else.
Parking was brought up.
Okay.
Twenty, yes, it was brought up.
Yeah. Parking will probably be a part of it, but right now we're proposing. How to make this all safer so. People can get in and out of the river because they have a legal life.
Yes, ma'am. But if you know, our engineer that came, we have a proposed road that's going to be done. We got a grant for a million. A million dollars correct to do Northwest River Road. This seems like it would be feasible that if our road needed to be extended and if. Um, it needed to follow through with the improvements that were being done, why wouldn't we consider it?
We would, if we need an engineer to engineer it, we will definitely get an engineer.
Perfect.
But this is for like highway eighty.
Okay. I just want to make sure that whatever we're requiring subdivisions to do and our citizens to do here, that we follow the same thing.
When you make it with text on and such, make sure you're saving all those emails because. I don't want to send an email out to you with information that I don't, that I haven't stopped and checked on. You might ask me some questions tonight and I'm going to say, let me verify that because. But on email, they're going to give you the answers and that you have something to hang your hat on.
And I would like to see the email.
Adrian, could you put up that ordinance? I'm sorry. I let, young, young lady, I'll let you speak up. Could you put up that ordinance from two thousand and eleven? This ordinance is currently on the books and there's a little history behind this. Uh, TRPA gave the city twenty-three thousand dollars to help. Uh, here we go. Here we go. Come up with that. If y'all want to read all through that, the bottom line is TRPA. They had twenty-three thousand and with that money, the county threw in another eight acres and in return. TRPA was promised a access to take their canoes and kayaks out. If y'all want to read all that through there, here's my problem. It's still on the books. And we have promised TRPA now that we would keep this as a unloading and unloading zone only. And on top of that, let's talk about Facebook again. People are, are in that, in that post, they're, they're, they're thinking I want a big white, a park. So we can have a bunch of drunks go down there and throw beer bottles in the river. That's the last thing I want. You know, I'm the one that got the can ban through here. I'm a river guy. But this goes back to a promise the city made to TRPA. And by the way, TRPA. Has given us, they've helped us with wastewater, uh, uh, discharges, you know, uh.
You want, you want to say something, Tom, about what you've done with them?
Okay. We got the HK development. We, we, they, we've been supporting us and the reason we have a crystal clear water here in Martin is because of TRPA and Smurf. Okay. So I have a problem with the city going back on its word. That's an issue for me. Twice now. Okay. It's happened twice. Go ahead.
I'm going to just kind of take a little step back from that point, which is separate from my thing, but when you bring up that graph or not graph, but picture of the roads. It looks, you know, great. You've got your colors, your arrows, all the things, stop signs, whatever. That's not how it works in reality though, right? People don't always park where they're supposed to. People don't always have ease and quickness with their unloading. And there are people walking wherever they want. So who's going to be there to monitor this really well? To make sure people are doing it the right way because if it's not done the right way, it's not going to work in my opinion. And I live right there. I've seen people. Going up and down, up and down, however they want, too fast, people almost getting hit. And I, you know, have a new baby. I want him to grow up there. I want him to be able to feel safe as he goes down to the river or walks around on his streets. You know, whether he be going to the river or not. And so I'm curious, you know, in reality, how's that going to be held?
We can't be, we can't be there twenty-four seven, but once we put the signage up, we can enforce those. Word will get out once we start towing cars. Word will get out once we start writing citations for one of the stop signs. There's, the word's going to get out that, hey, this is what I'm going to do.
The best thing is we're slowing down the traffic. The biggest thing is that's a bottleneck. And we all know it is. And it's an issue with, you know, there is no stop sign on River Road. We've all been on River. I walked the dog there every single day. I have dodged, you know, you, we all have done that. Okay. But you know. We, we talked about putting the stop sign there. This is the most logical place to put it on the biggest straightaway. Pretty much of the whole area. And, and it, and there really should be one there because if any of us have come from the other side and tried to go left there. You're, you know, you're, you're, you're gambling.
Well, and I want to commend our Martindale police. They've been educating the public down at the, the city parks. At the other end for the last couple of months and especially the last month. We were having trouble with people using brick ads. And just turning out the hot coals and they've not ticketed them, but just going and informing them, educating them. That, hey, we don't want you to do that because we don't want to fire. That's going to get out of control and. Just enforcing all of the other park rules that we have down there. And it's been working. And once, we've only had paid parking in the city parks now for a couple of weeks. And it's cut the people by about forty percent. The amount of people that went to phase one last weekend. So it does work to have paid parking to cut down on the number of people.
I want to clarify that. I do respect Martin LPD. You know, y'all are doing great. It's nothing with that. It's just. Realistically, you know, no one can be there twenty-four seven and maybe the word of mouth will do wonders, but.
It will get out. Like I say, and what the mayor just said, we went down there and we just, we didn't go down and start writing tickets for all the. The new rules and everything that come along, the new ordinance. We went and started educating people, getting, hey, move this stuff out there. You can't have this here. And it's, it's really worked. If y'all, y'all want to come down there on a weekend and walk through with us. You can see the people and then just the difference in the, uh, the attitude of the people that when they're communicating back and forth. Of how they've responded to what we're doing. I had, I had a guy that I told to get a barbecue pit out of there. And then the next week he came there without a barbecue pit and helped me tell some other people. Uh, you know, I saw him doing that. So that's some of the things. And I think that same, uh. Mentality will, will take place here, you know, especially if we tell the raptors, hey, you know, don't. You know, try to get yourself off there. It's loading and unloading. It's not loading up, packing your boat and everything else. Right. Get all your stuff situated later, but get your stuff off, get your vehicle out of the way so the next person can come along and, and enjoy it as well. But we don't have much space.
We let them have propane grills, just not the brick ads.
That's exciting. What about our ADA compliance?
Let, let these like.
We're growing.
Got something to say, sir?
Yeah. So I'm, I'm well aware of TRPA and Smurf. I'm on the board of directors for the Eyes of San Marcos River. Um, the thing that I'm, and I of course want. Access for TRPA and paddlers in general and people who respect stewards of the river. I'm concerned about the level of access it could provide to people who are not stewards of the river. But one of the things I'd like clarification about is. Before this green space that was donated, from my understanding recently. What was, when the city of Martindale said that, you know, TRPA has access at Skull Bridge. What access? I mean, because there's no public access there theoretically. So what access were you promising? Now we have a green space and I'd like to.
Well, you want to say, go ahead.
That was my question.
Go ahead.
Basically said it. So if you go back, I'm, go back to the, um, the ordinance that y'all got in two thousand and eleven.
I can, I can try to address that because I was involved.
Okay. Basically, here's my, a simple question. Based on this ordinance. What happened and what has, have we been doing to make this ordinance work?
First of all, at the time that this ordinance was written, that road was closed. It was in two thousand and eleven, they had closed Shield Road, that one you got. Had a bunch of dirt piled up. So the mayor, uh, Ms. Harrison said, yeah, you can, you can use that. So it was, that's how the ordinance was written. As far as parking. We didn't even talk about parking because we had a parking area that we used for fifty years. Yep, says sixty. I don't know if you're really that old, but anyway. For as long as anybody can remember, that was parking and we just assumed. That was the right of way. We, we always would have that. So we didn't ask about a parking lot at that time. And, and I should also mention the bridge at that time was much narrower. It was a wind bridge. We had plenty of room on the, on the big getting side to get the bugs out. And then we just carry them across. The bridge, you're not busy. I will admit it's scary now and I'm, I'm loving this idea about a one way. One way street up. That'll help a lot. That would also give you that street to maybe do your walking on if you're parked up top. And I like the stop sign idea, but the bottom line was we didn't ask for parking because we had parking. But it was good to have a loading, unloading zone. I'll say that.
Then I had one second, one other thing to this question. Um. Is Martindale Police, this kind of doesn't really have anything to do it, but. How can we patrol? How do y'all have, or do you have control of the people who are, um. Just loitering in the river and hanging around? You can't do any, can you do anything about that?
No. What we can do is enforce the, uh, well. Right now, if they're in the water, the only thing we can really enforce right now is the disposal container ban. Cause they're in the water because that, if, uh. This is a city council issue, but I think the alcohol and everything, because they designated those. Uh, the parks, you can't have alcohol in the parks. There's lots of things you cannot have. We can enforce those. Those things. If there was some kind of, whatever kind of designation the city council wants to do for that area there. Then they can adopt those same kind of ordinance for that particular area, if that makes sense. And then we could have some enforcement. We don't have enforcement stuff on the Guadalupe County side coming, coming in.
Chief, chief, and I'm just asking a question about that.
Yes, sir.
And I, I really apologize and I've got my own private paper. But, um, I've got like Stephen Hawkins, I'm losing my voice. And I'm really want, one that will do Stephen Hawkins voice, but I think, yeah.
Pretty close.
I was going to ask, if it was an ordinance or some, some rules that said. Your parking here is for access to the river and out. I mean, it's, it's ingress, egress of the river, not par, using that other bank. Even though it is the other bank on the other side of the river, but could Martindale have rules? To say if you violate these rules, you will be towed. I mean, if you, if you saw a person, even though they're violating rules on the other side, but. That would break the ordinance that says you can't do that.
No, I, I couldn't say you're breaking the rule over here, I'm going to tow your vehicle because you're doing something. If, if that's what you're saying. I couldn't say, hey, if you're, if you've got cans in the river, you got alcohol in the river, I'm going to tow your car from up here. No, because they're legally where they're at and, and they're good where they're at.
So it could also be done if that land was annexed or could you have a.
No, you didn't do that. I'm still couldn't tow someone's vehicle, uh, just because they broke a law over here.
Can you give them a citation?
I can give them a citation for the law they're breaking, but not for their vehicle being where it's at.
On the Guadalupe side, you can write a citation?
No, 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 no. Uh, he was talking about solely on our side, I believe. Nothing on the Guadalupe County side. I, I can't write citations on the Guadalupe County side. I have no authority on the Guadalupe.
Can you show me on there with the arrow where it starts, Guadalupe County?
Um, I didn't.
In the middle of the tent.
So, chief, I got a question for you. So we don't do, so we don't do anything? Nothing? We put tow away signs and.
On our side.
And all, yeah, our side and they all go to the Guad, they all go to the Guadalupe side. It's, we can't do a thing about it. If they, as long as they're not on nor, on our, in that area. In our city limits or on Northwest River Road, there's nothing we can do unless, unless we had, unless we had that property for. Parking or park, whatever you want to call it. There's nothing, there's nothing we could do except. The, the vehicle to be towed off and they'll all be going on the Guadalupe side.
Pretty much. Yes, sir.
And let's look real quick. Let's, let's. Sam, you know, I'm saying, so if we don't do, say for example, we don't, we don't make anything. We shut it down. Nothing happens. It's green space. We don't do anything at all. We tow off cars. You're not going to patrol down there, are you? I mean.
No, because our contract, well, yes, we, we're sure going to patrol there.
But you're not, you're not going to be, you're not, you're not, compared if we had a park or whatever you want to call it, you'd be patrolling more. If we had like paid parking up there and we had ordinances like alcohol, uh, disposal container ban.
Right. So, so whatever happens, right? Uh, we're still going to assist the tow companies. Uh, because the tow company can't patrol it the entire time either, right? So we're still going to assist them. If we see something, we'll call the tow company if they're illegally parked. Uh, we're going to, we're going to work with them and do that. If we go down to those, like we do now, if we go down to the river and we see people with cans inside there, we tell them, hey, get your cans out. Most of the people I see right now though, are not on our side of the river. They're on the Guadalupe County side. So I really can't say much to them if they're drinking their alcohol and doing their thing down there.
So are the cars, you, you mentioned towing of, of the cars. While the people that are illegally parking there are going to get towed, are they going to be down at the river? And then they're going to come up and their cars are going to, going to be towed and.
The same if you're gone. The same if you went and parked somewhere and in a no parking zone and they towed your car.
Okay. No, no warning.
The sign was there and someone knocked it down about six months ago and then I went to go get it to stand it up and it got stolen. It was there.
So I kind of have a two-part question. So in the ordinance from, I guess, two thousand eleven or whatever it was, it says that there's, uh, after fifteen minutes left unattended, it, it can be removed. And so would that be in the loading, unloading zone that we're proposing in the green space, could we maintain that? And then in the parking, the proposed paid parking, could we potentially do something where it's also loading, unloading, parking, like you can't hang out. If you're caught hanging out there, it would be towed.
That's gonna be a separate issue.
Yeah, that's. Because if there's paid parking.
That's how the city decides to write their ordinance.
Well, so the third part of that, I suppose, is if somebody does park on the Caldwell County side and they cross over to the Guadalupe side to put their boat in, can yous, can, uh, what, what's, who's in charge of that? I mean, they're parked on the Caldwell County, but they're entering on the.
Yeah, they're parked in Martindale. And they're abiding by the law in Martindale and they go across.
Well, they cross the bridge illegally.
Break the law in Guadalupe County. Well, if they break what, what is the law in Martindale, it would not be a, because they don't, there's no city ordinance for Guadalupe County. They don't, they can't enforce our city ordinances in Guadalupe County.
Right.
So I don't think the city or the county can go in there and say, hey, I'm gonna have a disposable can ban. They can do that. They can't do those kind of.
But they're still parked off.
But they're still parked on our side. That, that really doesn't matter.
Hopefully, we can make some ways to get the boats into the river on the Caldwell County side. That's what our party would like to be.
I would pair it more control.
Yeah, just like if they parked over on the Guadalupe County side and came over here, then I can enforce those same laws over here. I wouldn't have to say, well, you parked over there.
Well, and would the Caldwell County constables or sheriff's department be able to enforce whatever?
Yeah, we communicate, we do communicate with them guys when there's stuff going on down there. Wilson, you can, just like at Johnson Street Bridge too, the same thing that, that little area, I don't know if you're familiar with that, about below the dam. You know, that, as soon as you cross that little wooden bridge, you're in Guadalupe County. So, uh, the same thing happens there. A lot of people go there. And so we run into the same kind of issues there. When they're on the other side, you know, that bridge is what? Fifteen feet long, basically, but they go that fifteen feet. So they're exempt from a lot of stuff if you're on this side of the bridge.
Hey, could, could I have a favor? Could y'all put that, put that map back up and show the Guadalupe side?
Can I answer your question?
I'm sorry?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't raising it very high. Um, it sounds like some of these issues and concerns could maybe be addressed by getting Guadalupe County, uh, involved. Have you not engaged with them yet on solving this resistance?
I think that's why I'm here.
Yeah.
We have been in touch with the landowner that owns that particular part of the property. So there has been any communication with that landowner with regard, because, you know, it's the, most of the, most of the issues revolve around that peninsula there that you see where it says San Marcos River.
Yeah.
And, and that's where the shenanigans, if you will, are going on and right there. And, um, I mean, we're, in essence, we're trying to help them. They're not a constituent of anyone here in this room from the, from the city council, but we understand that it's an issue and is a good faith issue. We're trying to address those things. And so there's been dialogue there. It just has not gone to the level that we can really help.
And I'm not a hundred percent certain, but I believe I am. Guadalupe County cannot, like, their, their county orders, they cannot issue a can ban. Right?
Right.
They can't.
City council.
A city can, but a county cannot. They don't have that authority.
In this particular area of, uh, Guadalupe County, would it be the commissioner's court that you work with or city?
Commissioner's court. Commissioner's court. Cities have a lot more teeth.
Well, the other issue is you can't just, the, the county can't just say, oh, just this little area.
One, one, one.
They have to do the county.
Right.
So that's the issue there is you had this island of issue that is really of our concern. And there's no, there's very little jurisdiction.
I'm gonna throw my two cents in here. Don't be like, start nothing at me, but how many officers do you have? You have four. You have a couple of relationships with some of the sheriffs. Yes. So when you guys are discussing this, just outside looking in from what I've been dealing with, you want to do something you can enforce. There's a lot, there's a lot to be said. I understand the questions and well, what if they did this and this and this? But you guys think that there has to be an officer that sees that and probably has to have it on film. Because you're gonna get some attorney. Everybody knows the number four, right? So you're gonna get some attorney that just wastes your money and your time. So look for stuff that you can enforce and it's very frustrating. And, and I wanted to say that, uh, as like a closing thing, but I'll say it now since you brought it up. It does me no good to go across there and see something in Guadalupe County if I get into some kind of verbal disagreement or put my guys in a bad spot that they go over there because they can't enforce anything and they just put themselves in a bad spot because we're not where we are and that law may not be effective in Guadalupe County where it is over here. So that, that's a lot of things. Yeah. And, and he's right. This, counties don't have the teeth that a city does. They can't issue. Thanks. I came from Comal County. They have a word, a water-oriented recreation district. They have the city of New Braunfels. That's why can bans and gla, glass on the river and stuff like that was all easy to pass over there because the Guadalupe County, uh, the, the Guadalupe and Comal had word and the city of New Braunfels.
Behind you.
Go ahead, Tom. Tom wants to talk.
Real quick. Okay. So after my aggravated assault with a deadly weapon down here at Allen Bates Park, I started taking my dog here to the skull bridge. I walk across and then down to the river and then into the river. And then where that sandbar right there, it says San Marcos River. Don't you, don't we publicly have an access to somebody feet from the river onto?
Go ahead, go ahead, Tom.
I can answer that. There is a gradient boundary on Navajo rivers with state-owned trade ban. It has, um, if you have three different surveyors, where that is, you'll get four opinion. But the bottom line is fairly close to the river. Normally, the state-owned land is devoid of vegetation. So you're right, when you say, well, I want to travel along. But here's the rub. That area is not a natural river. Martindale Dam raises the level of the, of the state-owned water to the point that I am absolutely convinced the water is above the gradient boundary. Any dry ground, whether it's Gomnig County side or Cullag County side, is private. So there is no, there is no access.
I don't know if it's true. I don't know.
Well, well, you know, you can check with lawyers, but.
I live on.
Let him, let him talk.
But I saw them. I got to see that stretch of river when they drained Martindale dam. And it was, it was because they're upset with us because we were fighting them over the dam. They raised the level of the dam. But when you ran and got to see Rattles, as soon as you went to the last drop, the river was, the river four feet lower than it normally is. So by the time you got down the skull, it's probably five feet. So I'm, I'm convinced, but when the lake fills up, there is no public land on the sides, which makes this a lot different than most fishing.
What, what he's saying is the river is lower right now than it's ever been.
I understand. It is low.
No, it'd be lower. It's lower. If, if there wasn't a dam there.
Yeah.
That's where, that is where the, the actual flow is.
People have access to the river. If they come down in a boat and they park it on the bank wherever it is, aren't they allowed to step out for a second and redo their gear? I thought they had so many feet that they could maneuver or, or take a break or whatever. It's, no.
You got, one foot's gotta be in the water.
Touching the water. Okay. What's that?
Or a gravel bank up to the gradient boundary that Tom was describing.
Hate to go, let's go back to.
I wanted to ask, I have two things that I wanted to say. I just need clarification. Whenever we're talking about parking, who is, is the parking open to the public? I know we got kayakers and canoeists. Is it open? Is it a free for all, open for everybody?
Well, I don't think, we, we haven't even discussed parking yet. I think he was coming on at first to talk about the safety and the signs.
I'm pretty sure we have been talking about parking.
But we haven't yet started that. So.
Okay. So here's a, here's a letter that Michelle and Steve wanted me to read. A few points of clarification. TPWD is only disallowing bank fishing because Tom said that doing so would make his job easier as a R A C A gatekeeper. We are great, very grateful to Tom for his volunteer role doing so. And we know recently there has been an increased number of inquiries and requests to use the R A C A. So at Tom's request, I asked TPWD to include no bank, no bank fishing on the description. But just to clarify, disallowing it based on trying to make it life easier on time. Steve and I continue to believe that the fewer people who park at the Y, whether on the street or as paid or unpaid city parking, the more traffic there will be on our peninsula. So we are, we are not in favor of parking there. We also realize that the sanctioned formal parking for about twenty cars here is not much different than what the situation has been for the last few years, during which time traffic and trash on the peninsula, peninsula has only increased. We honestly don't see what the big deal is about trying to maximize every parking space for every paddler and fisherman. We already provide the R A C A space at the request of Tom and Mike McClab. It only opened on Memorial Day. It seems we should give that some time before pressing for the proposed Y parking area. That said, I know this is a particular passion for Tom and that he is a dedicated advocate for the river protection. And we want to maintain a great relationship with them. But if you want our honest opinion, we simply are not advocates for the parking proposal.
Okay. I want to make a point. Can you, can, can you scroll up there going towards that Rocka parking site of Adrian? Oh, you don't have it on there? Can you get it up there, sir?
What again?
The, the Rocka site for the parking. Can you, could you get Google map real quick? Okay, there's two points I want to make. Okay.
It's outside the city.
But I want to make a point though. This is my point. Okay, this is a workshop. Okay, if you can, can we see that?
Touche, Mike.
Bottom, bottom line is.
This area?
Yeah, it's a little, have y'all seen that? Have y'all seen that? Has anybody seen that little, it's a little cow pen? And, yeah, and this is the, this is the problem. It can only hold five or six cars. Okay, that's the problem. And another problem is it's extremely dangerous. Because I walk that road all the time. You talk about, you think that Y is dangerous. You people walk, see where that, where they unload and load their, their, their rafts right there? Okay, okay. Then you go up the road where they're gonna be parking. They're gonna have to walk up that road on a blind hill.
It's a three-minute walk. I've done it five times. I've filmed three of them. I've done it from both sides of the road. I've had to dodge cars every time. And I'm talking about at eleven o'clock in the morning. I'm not talking rush hour and schools are in. There, when it was originally proposed to do this to the city council, when we had a P and Z guy that was here before, and the proposal was brought before the city council, it was rejected by him before being brought to anyone in this room, I believe, that they required a sidewalk. And that's the issue. Are we talking about safety? And I'm, I'm a hundred percent with you on this. That particular rock site is the same issue. You're walking on a blind hill. I don't care if you go to the other side, you're on the same side. I've done it from the same side of the road. I won't do that again. I did that once. I won't do that again. I did it on the other side of the road. It's the same problem. You got cars that are going thirty-five miles an hour.
On a blind hill.
Two cars coming at thirty-five miles an hour. At least when I'm walking down Northwest River Road, I've got plenty of room to go in someone's yard to when I walk the dog. Do not have the same things, particularly when you get to that last one minute of a walk, when we're getting down close to the river, you're toast. And I, to be honest with you, when they put the rock aside in there, I, I honestly don't understand how people think, how the state even approved it without considering the safety of that walk. Okay, do I think that there's, this is a perfect solution? No. It's been going on for fifty years though, but I'm confused how the rock aside got approved when I don't think anyone from the state actually walked that pathway. And everyone, and when it was first brought up to the, the landowners, they got very upset with us because we talked about doing the sidewalk and they're not inside the city. They say, we're not inside of the city. We don't have to do it. And I totally respect them for that. That's their decision. But if they, if I tried to do that and I was inside the city, I would have been shut down. And the issue is safety. And so we're all talking about safety here. That's why the, this whole proposal about the single lane, I, I've been down there. You and I, you know, you take a trailer going the other way. If someone's coming the other way, you're toast. You know, there's an issue there when there's two cars. That, that one going up Shill Road, that road is less than sixteen feet wide. It is not a two-lane road. We don't need an engineer to, to measure that.
You still need a space for walking, for people to walk with their boats. And there also needs to be a crosswalk.
But let me finish. But, but it's a safety issue. So I don't, I totally understand, respect, you know, Tom doing the rock aside. But I will not park at the rock aside and walk three minutes to a boat that I left there unattended if I'm doing it by myself.
And I want to make two points. Gentlemen back there in the back, you pull trailers. Have you seen that little cow pen they got for a rock aside? There's no way you can, but it get a big trailer.
And, and that is certainly small, but I've also talked to John Botros, who does the Texas Parks and Wildlife Program, the River Access Program, about doing that on my property. And Texas Parks and Wildlife approved that site. You know, the design of that site and everything. And I have, you know, Steven and Michelle are getting compensated a certain amount per month for the amount of space and the amount of access.
I understand. When I understand.
So I'm not to say, the thing is, we could either generously ask Steven and Michelle to increase that size. And maybe they get compensated more or the city compensates them a little bit. Or, or the city has to do their own thing on the other side of the river. And you can't use Steven and Michelle's peninsula. That's now under Texas.
Well, how, well, how about, how about this? Well, how about the, let me speak. I'm gonna say one thing. I want to say one thing. What about this? We have a rock aside where the gravel bar is. And we have the, the, the rock aside where Michelle and Steve's property is. You have, it's free parking for fishermen, canoeists, kayakings. And then we have a paid parking lot for the payer that people want to pay, that people have trailers. It's part of the rock aside.
Right.
And the rocket, we follow the same rules as the rock aside, but you have paid parking and you have.
For the fire fishing guy.
Exactly. Now, how many people, we're, we're gonna hear, I heard, I heard twenty-eight people. And how in the world, if we shut that down, how in the world are they gonna put all those, those trailers?
Mike, we're gonna, we're gonna have people that have something to speak. Thank you. I really appreciate.
Before we let them speak, I just want to make one thing clear and just want clarification on the title. Okay, can you please, uh, get everybody up to speed on this?
It's a deed, not a title.
A deed.
It's a gift deed.
A gift deed.
It's the right, that's, that's define it what it is.
My God.
The gift deed.
Bring it up.
So the city has received a signed copy from, uh, the developer who donated the sand originally. Um, the county is requesting that this copy be submitted and, um.
And you say that the county did not accept it.
Has not yet officially received it.
Has not received it. So the deed has not been received yet. The deed.
However, but.
It has been, it has not been changed.
No, it hasn't been filed.
It is not filed.
It's been signed.
It does not need to be filed to be valid, though it is often in the landowner's best interest to record it with the county.
And the attorney.
That's why I wanted our attorney here.
And the attorney had told us that, uh, the man had signed it. Everything is good. It is our property.
Adrian, from the, whenever you talked to the county today, what did they tell you?
Uh, that they were requesting a hard original copy of the developer's, uh.
Or it to be official.
So who is supposed to actually file?
That's not true. That's not true. It is official.
Right.
Already.
I, I mean, the developer.
It is not changed in the CAD. It's not recorded.
Well, it's gonna be reported.
Thank you.
I, I had one question though about the original twenty-eleven D, uh, ordinance that Tom mentioned when it says at the beginning of that ordinance that it mentions parking, but even then in twenty-eleven, when the city said, we'll make this agreement, the city didn't do their diligent work and make sure the city owned that properly, that property when they originally did that. That was private property then when the city made that.
But are we owning that?
But that was wrong. The city was wrong then.
We got a gift deed.
Wrong then in twenty-eleven.
The attorney said it's good.
Okay, I, I just want to say, you guys, one at a time.
I'm just saying.
We need to let the public.
I don't even know.
Let the public speak.
Stop, stop, stop. Okay, our first speaker is Dwayne Groton.
Dwayne Groton, thank you for the opportunity to be in here, Mayor of City Council people. Appreciate you. Um, as the owner of TG Canoe and Kayaks, my family, myself and our paddling guests have freely used Skull Crossing as a put-in and a takeout for the last thirty-eight years. Historically, we have taken out at that road just prior or aft of the bridge. It is our go-to fishing and enjoying run. We live right next to town. We drop in there and four miles later, we're at Skulls Cross. It's magnificent. It's magnificent. Whenever a public road crosses a public road, ingress, egress, one road, the other is lawful. That same idea holds true in road crossing, a natural road, a river, lending safe, in, in grass, egress to and from the water. Tonight, we're looking at a river property on the left-hand side of the Y. And we're talking a lot about the right. We're actually looking at the left tonight, I think, and this, that's all we have control over here. Am I right, Amelie?
Correct.
Okay. I don't believe anyone has an argument of the legality of free ingress and egress. That's a road crossed by another road. Okay? That said, I've heard rumors of parking at the Y and even along CR-103 being eliminated or fee-based. As a drafted veteran in the U.S. Army a long time ago, I believe freedoms have been paid for with blood. Therefore, freedom should never be easily eliminated. If a freedom is considered to be eliminated, may it be by the desire of the vast and supermajority of those law-abiding citizens affected most by that decision. Also, I'd like to address you all as a founding and lifelong member, board member of the Texas Rivers Protection Association. Here we are. On April twentieth, twenty-eleven, we talked about this quite a bit already. The TRPA presented a check with an amount of twenty-three thousand, one hundred dollars to the city of Martindale to help in the purchasing of an expansion of Allen Beach Park. That's nearly fifty percent of the purchase price at that point in time. At that time, TRPA president, Tom Goins, presented the check to Mary Lorraine Harrison, with others witnessing while in attendance. Along with the twenty-three thousand, one hundred dollar donation, the city of Martindale said they would build a paved, loading and unloading area for river recreation equipment and supplies to leave and/or access the river. It was to be on the east side of the San Marcos River, immediately below Skull's Crossing. The ordinance is twenty-eleven dash four dash zero one. It's been twelve years, and we're still waiting for that promise to be met. Now, I'd like to address you as Dwayne DeGroot Nice, and I'll add my wife Evelyn DeGroot Nice, we're just folks. We're glad to financially, we were glad to financially help the city of Martindale's movement to eliminate disposable containers from the San Marcos River by purchasing non-disposable, floating aluminum bottles with lids to pass out to the Martindale community and to those wanting to enjoy and respect the river. We paid several, about five, six, seven hundred bucks for it. It came out of our pocket, but we did it because we love the community. The DeGroot Nice family gives our heartfelt thanks for the passing of that ordinance to protect the San Marcos River. We appreciate you all for that. All this to say, from helping in and sponsoring four decades of river, San Marcos River cleanups, and more to come, with working to financially secure new Martindale, uh, parkland, and then financially supporting the non-disposable container law, it's our honor to support the city of Martindale. Please keep the parking areas east of Skull's Crossing, which probably might not be popular, open and free to use as it has been for decades, as long as I've been. Even though we are not, we are not in the Martindale city limits. Martindale is our town. I would let Tom and Paula would think the same. Maybe Jared Cockburn would think the same. We don't live in the city of Martindale, but this is our town. Together, we do make this a great community. Thank you.
And thank you for your service.
Um, our next speaker is Evelyn DeGroot Nice.
Well, I didn't come prepared like Dwayne did. But I don't usually speak. But I'm Evelyn DeGroot Nice. I live next to the river. I don't live on it, but I have access to it. I paddle a lot, and quite often, I go by myself. From Tom's place down to Skull's Crossing is a very easy trick for me to do. I've been doing this for thirty-five or more years. I put in at Skull's, I'll go up and down to the dam and back and forth, and I will do this by myself. I don't always have somebody to go with. My question or my comment is what you've been talking about is safety. When I'm there by myself, I do not want a three-minute walk over the hill to get to my vehicle. When I am there and I need to get to my vehicle, it's, it's within a minute. I can see it. I can see the traffic. I look at all the traffic, and I'm not too terribly concerned about the traffic. We've been there for thirty-five years. I don't know how many accidents actually have happened there. My concern is my physical safety, getting to and from my car as quickly as I can. I get back, I'll throw my boat in, and it takes me longer to walk to the car than it does to throw my boat in my truck. So I would like to see parking stay where it's at because of the safety issue of traveling three-minute walk. And I don't walk as quick as some others because I am getting older. But I would like to see parking closer by for the safety. And as I, as I try and continue to use the river.
And would you like it free or paid?
Free would be best because that's what it's been for fifty years.
Yes, ma'am.
But, you know. Yeah, it's a, it's a public right of way.
Yes, ma'am.
Parking would be good.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Tom Going. And if you want to stay right there.
I do want to say a couple of things right up front. I was, I was the one guy to talk Michelle and Steve into allowing, I mean, in agreement with Parks and Wildlife to have a Rocka site. The most important part of that is the place where the, where the canoes, the rafts, and everything are loading and unloaded, right there on the peninsula. And I really believe that if Martindale can sign an interlocal agreement with Parks and Wildlife, they have rules, and there's some way to enforce those Parks and Wildlife rules off that peninsula, and they can swing a nail, that would be, that'd be pretty good. And, and another game, we're just, we're not really excited about spending their twenty-four-hour day at that peninsula. So having a little help would help them out. When I saw the parking lot, now, I, I knew they were negotiating about a parking lot. I had a standard, you know, a little closer, for one thing. And I definitely assumed it would be a little bigger. I must say, it's, uh, it's going to be hard to get two trailers. I don't know if we've done it yet, getting that parking lot at the same time, because you gotta maneuver around the misty tree, which we all just said, can we please cut that down? No. So the misty tree stage, and you gotta drive around the misty tree and then get pointed along the back fence. And if anybody parks anywhere else, you're out of luck. So don't mind me. I was surprised to see it. I love that it's free, and a few people can get in there and have free parking. But it's not big enough. And the other thing is, I don't really think, uh, Steve and Michelle need to provide all the parking here. I would love for Martindale to help out. And I think, I think the two parking lots can, can work together. Somebody wants a free spot, there's a few spots available, they can walk down the hill. But for all the fly fishermen and the canoes with trailers, you need, you need the Y. I did lie, uh, blatantly, I guess, about, uh, the property, the deed. But it has been signed. It is not a riot. I thought it had been, uh, registered with county, my informant. So I lied, and I, I am going to take a confessional as soon as possible.
I still love you.
Uh, again, this now, I'll just kind of hit the highlights. The Supreme Court stated it is a settled policy and cherished object. On this day, the gorgeous navigable streams, for obstruction and the secure and improve them as common highways, but trade and travel are such as its citizens that I appreciate using for this work. I will say that for the people that think the river is all about getting drunk on enter tube, that's not proper use of a highway. And I guarantee if you tried that at an highway, hey, you couldn't fly. So, like, that's just, that's, that's my opinion, maybe clean up the river. A lot of people say you want restricted travel on the river. Well, I got five thousand when down, every weekend. I like to knock it down to four thousand. Four thousand, right there. Anyway, where Skull Road and San Marcos River intersect is a highway intersection. And I'm, I'm saying that, you know, you get charged for it, I think, that's fine. But there ought to be a way, when you come to this intersection, to park your car and get in your canoe, to leave one road and use the other. Or no, or to park your car and paddle down here. And so I would call, I would call it a transitional access parking lot on the second vein, and with this on the L. And I've heard from the chief, he said in the mornings, there's a bunch of bicyclers that used to use that Y. What's, what's wrong with letting them park there? Their ten dollars is just as good as any canoe. And they're going early. So it shouldn't be open for bicyclers. It shouldn't be open for joggers. I mean, but if you park, and you're not a Martindale resident, a taxpayer, they got to pay. And it's something, you just got to get used to it. I mean, you're not, you're not the only one that they're charging. San Marcos is talking fifteen dollars more and twenty-five on holiday, I think, probably next year. They're being used to it, insane. The one thing about it, if people visit my place, I just start street bikes, I'm racing, and I don't charge for the vehicle. So the trick is, leave like one vehicle, pay ten bucks, and then when you get there, he runs out, gets the van, you come back, you know. But don't park trailers, you know? You can go get the trailer. Anyways, I would say, on the sign, I would say transitional access parking lot for parking vehicles on using watercraft, bicycles, walking or running. Use of the river for swimming, wading, bait fishing, or hanging out is not permitted in this area. Parks are available for those activities in Martindale and in San Marcos. And then you need areas, then the parks are this way. And you should also mention they were banned by Tom Going or TRPA. That's it, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Jim Hafernick?
Yes. My name is Jim Hafernick. I am from San Antonio, Texas, and have been a traveler and visitor to Martindale and San Marcos area for over forty years. I'm also an avid canoeist and have traveled a number of Texas rivers. I was very much involved with the revitalization of the southern reaches of the San Antonio River, and I took a great deal of my observations with the San Marcos River and offered them as suggestions to the Oversight Committee. Some of the many recommendations given to the Oversight Committee was having as many access points on the river as possible to facilitate moving in and out of the river. The result is, at least on the San Antonio River that was revitalized, is a continuous section of river that people have free access to. As I understand, the closing of Skull's Crossing on the San Marcos River will further limit in, will further limit in and out access on the San Marcos rivers for canoeers, kayakers, fishermen, birders at that crossing point, which has existed, I'm assuming, for about sixty years. I respectfully ask that the Skull's Crossing on the San Marcos River be open and free. Thank you. Thank you.
Um, I think it's David or Dana Wild, Wild? How do you say Dana?
That's right.
Okay, sorry.
No, that's okay. Good evening, council members and Madam Mayor. Uh, my name is Dana Wild. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of allowing residents who live just outside of the city limits to qualify for the free parking pass into the parks. I live three hundred feet outside of the city limit. My, uh, address is in Martindale. My ID says I live in Martindale. My utility bills are from Martindale. Uh, as far as I'm concerned, I'm a Martindale resident. The posting for the free parking pass program does not differentiate between different areas or neighborhoods. It simply says that residents of Martindale are eligible to receive a free pass. Yesterday, I was informed that this does not pertain to residents who live outside of city limits. That they are excluded from the program. I urge you to reconsider your decision to exclude residents who live just outside of the city from the free parking pass program. We are Martindale residents as well, and I believe we deserve the same access to the parks as everybody else uses them. That was what I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Catherine, Catherine, can I, can I respond to her? It's a work, so. Hey, uh, I see your point, and I promise people, maybe an annual pass, like Texas Parks and Wildlife, for locals. You know, like, follow what the state does, and, and I, I feel your grief. But the problem is, we're brought, we're a little town. We can't afford to mow the grass, you know? And, and this is the good part about this paid parking is, we're, how much, uh, Adrian, how much we got so far in our?
The parking signs were installed about two weeks ago today. Uh, we're at three thousand, one hundred dollars.
So that is, you think about that. That is two weeks with voluntary compliance, okay? So that, with that money, we could, we can make hike and bike trails. We, we, we can acquire, hopefully, we can get Skull's. That'll be additional parking for more funds, you know? Then maybe we can put a little, a little ramp there to put kayaks and canoes in. And the more parks we have, the more grants we got. But I feel your pain, and I haven't forgot about you, but I mean, an annual pass of some sort to, to, because since you're a local. And I, and I feel your pain, and I apologize.
I'm here. I, I'm downtown often.
But the, the, the prob, the problem we run into, and the chief could probably tell you this. Am I correct, chief, to say this? That on phase one, since we enacted the pay, the pay for parking, most people are very happy to pay, like in Lockport. We love to come to beautiful park. And it seems like a lot of people, a lot of people don't pay the ten dollars. And it seems like our, our parks are getting cleaner. Yeah, I was getting really upset because I saw beer bottles down there and, and glass and all that. So it's getting better, okay? And I, I, I promise you that I will, I'll give you my word, I'm going to do some kind of annual pass to make it fair.
It'll probably be next year. We're still, this is all new, and we're working through it. And I do want to commend Sam Clinton. He's keeping the parks clean a lot, even going in and cleaning up the back. It must take a lot to keep the parks clean, we are spending a lot more money just removing garbage. It's just been a real big job.
Yeah, I, I just want to say real, real briefly. I got a degree in horticulture from Southwest Texas State, and then I got a federal job at the Presidio of San Francisco. Southwest Texas State, and then I got a federal job at the Presidio of San Francisco. So I worked there for twenty years in the conversion of a military base into a national park. So I was involved in landscaping, all park maintenance, all, all that stuff. So that's why I'm so passionate. Plus, I have a piece of land, a fifteen acre piece of land across from Spencer's that Tom Goins used to own. I have a little piece of land there, right on nineteen seventy-nine, and I've seen the impact of people coming to the river. I've documented diapers, cans, bottles, truckloads of garbage, truckloads of recycling. I have hundreds of pictures of all, all of these things. So I'm on top of it. I've been working with the mayor on, on the signage, and I thank Mike and Matthew for putting the signs up recently. Thank you.
And I would say one more, and I'll be quiet.
Really, really?
Really, I promise. Last, last weekend, I, I went to San Marcos, real business just packed to the walls, there's people everywhere, there's garbage cans everywhere. And then I go down Western Phil Road, Don's Fish Can, Texas State Two, garbage, trash everywhere, people in the middle of the road, hundreds of cars parked on that Hayes, that Hayes County, County Road. Then you come to, then you come to Martinville. It's like an oasis, really. And by having these parks with rules and regulations, we, we, we're the place, and I see it in the future, we're the place where families go, where kayakers go, where, you know, people want to swim and not deal with a bunch of drunk tubers, you know? And we got tubers upstream of us, we got tubers downstream of us. And there's two reasons why. The Martinville Dam is one thing, and we're a city, and we have ordinances, like the can ban. So we protect this river, and, and, and it's gonna be the, I hate to say it, it's one of the few places families could come. There's my spiel. I'll be quiet.
Thank you. Okay, Jake Walker.
I timed it before I came, I promised I'd do that. We could talk longer than that, we're not. All right, we talked about all this stuff on that, whatever. My name is Jake Walker. I just bought a house up here in San Marcos, just a few miles off the road, off twenty-one by the airport. I used to sit on a board for a nonprofit organization called Backcountry Hunters and Anglers, which advocates for public land and water access across the country. I know we gave out about twelve thousand dollars in grants the last time I was a board member, I'm sure we were up to a little bit more now. Anyway, I heard about this online, just wanted to come and tell you all that I care. So Texas has some of the best river access laws in the country. The law says that once you're in the water, with a few exceptions, you can pretty much follow that river as far as it'll take you. The caveat is that Texas is like ninety-five percent of private land. Much of that private land borders public rivers. That means the only way people can use the river is to access it from the few public parks, and more commonly, such as in this case, the few public rights of ways that run alongside road crossings. Skull's Crossing, you all know, is like one of like three river crossings between here and thirty-five. Not one of them has easy parking, not one of them provides easy access to the water. It's hard work no matter what. We're here thirty-five, it's like ten miles of river. You pretty much can't use that unless you pay to float at Don's Texas State Tubes, or you float here from San Marcos for the access. So came here tonight to ask for a crazy thing, I'm asking you to invest in this resource. Give us another park like you have downriver from here, make it a memorial, get a grant, ask that you don't charge people to park their cars there. I don't want to see this a pay-to-play situation. And don't get rid of parking completely. I think if you do that, you're basically preventing people from using the river altogether. Lean into it, I think that's what you're doing. Invite people to Martinville, invite people to this river, invite people to bring their families, invite people to kayak or to take their kayaks out and have dinner in town, invite the guides to come run their businesses from here. I think if you invest in this river and give people more opportunities to use it, the money's gonna come to this city in other ways. I don't like to think of this river as a way to raise money for the community, but I like to think of it as a way to build a community. Build a community around the San Marcos River, money will follow after that. Thank you.
Is there a younger?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring out a few comments. One is, any weekend, we also have to adjust to that whole skull area, forget, and it's not a good place for kids to be walking around, picking the game. And so I would suggest you entertain a non-voidering ordinance, both at the unloading and loading area and the wide parking area. I wouldn't probably go as far as Tom and say no swimming there, but no voidering, at least on those wing spaces. And two, we've, before the area was closed off by the developers, we had parking there. And built trash cans, and the trash cans actually seem to make the trash situation worse, in my opinion. And so I would suggest this might be a good opportunity to start a leave no trace campaign or a, you know, pack it in, pack it out, leave it better than the way you found it, sort of thing, and see if that works and enforce our anti-living laws.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For paid parking or not for paid?
I would prefer to see it free.
Thank you.
But you don't pay, because you're a local.
Right. But I would, I would like to see my friends to get.
I, I just want to ask Jared a question while we're talking about parking. If a city owns a parking lot, can a city make it privatized or exclusive only for, say, rafters or for people that are parking there and walking down to the river? Does the city have the ability with a public parking lot to make it exclusive or privatized?
It'd be very difficult to do so. If you try to do something like that, it would require somebody to be physically at the site and monitor and enforce that rule. We would not be able to do it through any passive mechanisms like our Park Mobile App or similar. We would have to basically put like a park ranger type of, type of position out there for them to monitor and control that activity.
Okay. Mr. Clinton, he mentioned bicyclists.
Yeah.
Or joggers, whatever.
Okay. Go ahead. I just, I just want to know if the parking lot can be open to all?
Yeah.
Or not be exclusive, that's all.
Our next speaker is Jeff Wadamer.
Do you have my paper?
Come on.
Thank you. I don't know what I wrote.
It was fresh on your mind at the time.
Well, it just came out. I didn't exactly know what this workshop was, I had an idea. I'll just read this out what I wrote, just, no one owns the river here. We all own the river. We should all have access to the river in each of our parks, which I assume includes Skull Road. You know, I was coming here four and a half years ago, my dog and I were always going down to Allen Bates every day, almost every day, picking up trash almost every day. And then I had my unfortunate incident, so then I started going out to Skull Road almost every day, picking up trash and taking my dog down to the river. There's rules, okay? You have to look at the, I don't know if it's a crush of people, but the reason people are going to the river is because it's a hundred and four outside, and they want to get in the water and cool off, and that's what they're doing down at Allen Bates with all the people that are swimming and diving off the trees and stuff, which they need to be careful. But I don't know why everybody's so amazed, but everybody's trying to build these blockades to keep people from using certain parks or certain parking lots, or they should be here. I mean, it's a lot of this is the people that own property on the river, they have their own private access to the river, and they're not really worried about anybody else. So I think that's unfortunate.
Thank you.
I would like to say one thing about that. There is, it is fenced off, it was the property owner that was there before. Our ink has not even dried on the, on the deed. Whenever it was proposed to us first for parking, there was no plan in place, we did not have a workshop. I never stated that I was not for parking or whatever, I was for having a plan to make sure that we did. I wanted to make sure that we were also being a community like eco-conscious about our green space, our riparian zones, our aquatic habitat in this area where we have in Martinville, and also to put an emphasis on that, to show that we are a community that cares about our natural habitat rather than every single space that was able to be accessed to be a charged space. But also like giving education to the community, you know, by placing informative signs, and I think that that's also very important.
Thank you. Robert Moreno.
I'm Robert Moreno, I live here in Lockhart.
In Martinville. There you go, Lockhart Street and Martinville.
So everybody's kind of focused on this, and one of the things that I kind of wanted to bring to attention is, in a previous city council meeting, Mark Pearson with Communities Unlimited had mentioned a program through Texas Parks and Wildlife where grants were available to small communities like Martinville. Some of those grants might have required matching funds from the city to, to get that grant. So my perspective is, for, for any land that was previously undesigned as parkland. So my perspective is, do we need to consider this piece of property in that decision for grants before we do any action on this property? So that's kind of, that's my perspective, is do we need to consider that in potential contribution as parkland?
So Mark Pearson and Laura Fowler were working on a grant. The deadline to apply for it was August first, this year or next year? I mean, if we couldn't get to it this year. So it did have fifty percent matching, and, but the nice thing was that you could use land that could be designated as parkland. So they were asking that question, and it kind of started a firestorm, because the city council had already voted not to use that as parkland.
And that's from the July sixth meeting?
Yeah, that was just July sixth. So we decided we'd better wait until August first next year, we could look at some of the other pieces of parkland that we have, that the city owns.
We have a lot of space.
Right now, this hasn't been designated either way. This is just a workshop. So as long as we do it in August, after August one, it qualifies for next year. So yeah, we, we are aware of that, yeah, we all are very aware, Mark, and have made conversations with him about that, so. The other thing that I wanted to make is, is what is, who is it that Martinville controls? Who can come into the, or is trying to control, who can come into the river at this point? And from the perspective of, if you make it a parking, parking lot, then you're gonna have paddlers, fisherman, but you're also gonna have people who come and use the river as a, to camp. So. Not really.
There's no camping allowed in the city limits.
Well, they're doing it now. Using it for the day. Yes. Rather than whatever that purpose is. So, so my other question is, if you build it, they will come. So if you put a parking, they will come. It's already parked, it's already there. So. What, have we done any type of evaluation on what it costs to maintain that property? Garbage, utilities, anything of that nature that's gonna, a cost that's gonna come from opening up as a parking, official parking spot? And then the other part is, I mean, yes, if it's paid parking, you're generating revenue. Will that revenue cover that cost that that's gonna be incurred? So those are the things, those are my points, is those things been considered in making a decision on what to do with this property, regardless of how it's used, but from a paid parking, if you build it, they come, and there's gonna be expenses that are being, gonna be incurred.
Robert, the good, the good part is, we got, it's a gift deal, it was given to us. We own, we own the property. So that's the, that's the good deal.
Now we have to maintain.
That's, that's the deal, you're right, you're correct. That's why, that's why we need paid parking.
Free or paid parking?
I'd rather have no parking.
Well, you don't, you're local. But I'm just saying, that can be worked out, I'm just saying. That could be worked out. I'm just saying is, there's a concept here, Mr. Goings talked about, with Texas Parks and Wildlife, to make it a special, you know, the, I was crucified on Facebook about making it a park, and the only reason I said that is because the ordinances we have, the can ban, the alcohol ban, but I'm willing to call it whatever, but again, it's about, it's about the paddlers. They've been, they've been using this thing for sixty years, and they have a right, with, we don't own that river.
And which we are all, we are all advocating for them. Nobody has ever wanted to exclude this from the paddlers. My whole intention for this focus was to be for the paddlers. My whole PowerPoint was for sustainability on our ecosystem and for our paddlers. There's no disputing that. Nobody's saying anything about the paddlers and canoeists.
Well, I misunderstood then. Okay.
Mr. Moreno.
Let me, let me, let me just respond though, real, real quick to what he said about the parks. I have been working in the past few, few months to try and get a maintenance plan and a proposal for Allen Bates in phase one and Guardiola Park. As of today, I spent hours, not hours, but watering, watering those trees, watering those shrubs. Nobody else does it, nobody else does it. I go down there and pick up diapers, bottles, beer caps, straws, everything, and Jeff, and Jeff, and Jeff does it too. He's got a pickup stick, and he picks up every little thing. But I'm sort of advocating for, let's get a plan in place for the parks that we currently have. We are not maintaining the parks properly that we have. So why are we adding more to this when we can't even maintain what we have? So that's.
I mean, that's, I agree with you, that's, and, and you know, we're fortunate to have you doing that now. If someday tomorrow, you decide, I don't want to do, I can't physically do it.
Well, I decided that, and so we hired someone to do the garbage, but then he became overwhelmed as well and said, I can't, I can't do this.
But here's my point. If we have paid parking and the amount of money that we're getting, we can hire a park, a park attendant, we can hire somebody to mow the grass, we can hire somebody to pick up the trash. That's what cities do. And real quick.
That's my question.
That's my question. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say one quick story, Ballmer Ray, out in West Texas. It's a beautiful spring-fed pool, swimming pool. It got loved to death, okay? They had three thousand people come in there. Finally, the state came in and said, that's it, six hundred and fifty people, that's it. And it's, it's maintained, no, no public consumption of alcohol. So what happens is, during the week, you, you call in and reserve a spot, and it's cost you eight dollars a head, okay? You go in there and you get to use a facility. So we, as a city, can't afford free. However, if we get income, we get more income from, from Skulls, we can hire a park, a park attendant, you know? We could get more grants, okay? And then, call it what you want, and especially if we have a partnership with Texas Parks and Wildlife, and we make it a, if we make it a Roca site, you could have Roca rules on that gravel bar. And the only thing is, we got Michelle's property is paid and our unpaid, and ours is paid, so anything that goes down in there has to be to the, to the, to the rules of Roca. And then you add a can ban and an alcohol ban, you're not, you're not gonna have people going down and throwing beer bottles in there, that's what we're concerned about. You know, it's a, it could be a really great combination of both. And then you've got Texas, the Texas Parks and Wildlife, you've got the game wardens inter, interlocal with us, to get Guadalupe County involved, we could come up with a really great partnership and fix the problem.
I'm asking a question. Is the revenue sufficient for these?
I think it would be.
We just went over the budget, we went over the budget. Three thousand dollars in two weeks. We went over the budget and.
And that's with ball and bear compliance.
Thank you, Mr. Moreno.
Thank you, thank, thank you, Wallace.
Can I see a game warden at Allen Bates before?
There you go, my point.
You don't usually see the game warden unless you're doing something.
People are fishing. I don't know if they have fishing licenses, I doubt most of them do. If you want to talk about revenue, I don't know if we get revenue from the game wardens, they keep it themselves, anyway.
That's my point.
Okay, our next speaker is Aaron, and I'm not sure what the last name. Zor?
Zor, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks for your time, my name is Aaron Zor. I'm not currently a resident in Martinville, I live in San Marcos, I've been in Central Texas about twenty-five years. So I'm not here as a resident, I'm here as a member of the paddling community, safari racer, and I think that you'll find some of your most vocal advocates in protecting this resource, it's a lifeblood of this town, come from that community. And even though I'm not a resident, this is a special place in my heart. My wife and I were attracted to this town, we chose to find our church here, we chose to get married here, we had a receptionist building a few doors down, we had a band between the silos, so I do have some roots in this town, I'll always have connection to it, and I hope to have. So I do have some roots in this town, I'll always have connection to it and hope to have more of a connection to it in the future. Our attraction to Martindale did not come from Highway 80. When you're driving through here, it might, you know, it's another stoplight and a gas station in Central Texas. You might roll right on through. It was, it was traveling down the river where we realized Martindale was such a special place. And that's what drew us here to try and spread our roots out. And so I understand you have to balance issues of public safety and municipal finance, and there's a lot of things that are going to, whatever eventually happens here. But, and I certainly understand that there is a huge desire to regulate inside of behavior of the river and the way some people use it. I just think that we need to be creative and look for other ways to deal with that than to try and generally limit access to the river. I think it's, you know, it's not a path that's really going to be effective. People, you know, are going to find their way there. And so I just wanted to say I'm in favor of what we can do to make it a safer situation. But just to go on record is, hoping that we can preserve access for the paddling community, even if it means other steps have to be taken to keep it a nice, desirable family-friendly place. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, hey, I'm with you. I've been paddling for 50 years. I'm a racer, oh, ex-racer, I used to work with this man, I'm with you. I'm a, I'm a boater and I, this is why I got on council, to protect this beautiful river. That's why I'm here.
Lynn Tandras?
She's got a ticket for. This is my 40th year of coming to this river. And you're 50 years, right, it could be more, but Gary Stedwell, who first brought me to this river, had been doing it for 10 years and using that access point. So I know your 50 years is correct, I can't speak to the 60. But my name is Lynn, as you heard, I'm from Austin. I would love to be a resident here. I just haven't figured out how to afford to give the property, we can't all afford it. But if anybody's got ideas, let me know. I live as bad as close to the county line to San Marcos as I can, still being in Austin. Why I'm changing my bullet points, and so I may not be as smooth without them, is I wrote that this has not been a very friendly place over my 40 years to people from outside. And that was true in the past. I am actually heartened to hear that, I hear you say, the river belongs to everybody, everybody's saying access is owned, it's owned by us all. So I'm eating words. Because I don't know if the gentleman that was a volunteer with fire and rescue, I followed him in, and I just stopped short because this building brings back, this room brings back really bad memories. Because I got a ticket at that place for sitting in my car, waiting for the people to get the boats out and to me. And no parking one, I won that. I spent $400 buying a $50 ticket. Right up there, I'm sitting at the Y. This was.
Couple moons ago.
20, 30 years ago, yeah.
I think we're still paying for that.
I can't remember the judge's name. The icon, but anyway.
It was my mother.
But you know, she didn't, she didn't. So I had to go to Caldwell.
I know, she does budge real well.
Not real flexible.
I also need to warn, so there's a couple things I would like to say. I don't know about the free parking or not, but I do not want you to become like my city, City of Austin. They told us that if they put, made us start paying paid parking to access, I still call it Town Lake, the Lady Bird Johnson Lake, that there would be easier parking. But it's a maximum of two hours. And even though I've done the Texas Parks, I mean, the Texas Water Safari, I was in the 90 to 100 crowd, I wasn't the fast one. So I can't get down that river safely in two hours. So what happens is you'll have creep with the parking, it will say, okay, it's open for the whole day, and then it's open for two hours, one hour. The other thing is, I'm worried about the trailers. I no longer lift over my head because I had, wrote, had surgery, there was a piece of surgery. I said, is it because I've done all this paddling? He goes, no, you must be a power lifter. And I said, no. And then I went home and realized, all the years I'm putting 80-pound canoes on top of my, that car right there. So, so I now pull a trailer. I also taught quite a bit with the American Canoe Association, I teach adults. And it's getting them on the river that brings them back. I've done maybe 25 river cleanups, and a lot of my students have come there and we have been in mud up to here and, and pulling out tires and everything. Those are the kind of people you want on this river. I don't know, I know Susan Eaton is listening, she teaches Boy Scouts in Houston. And very few of her 12-year-old Boy Scouts drive their own car. So she's, she pulls a trailer. So basically, I'm very happy to hear how much you care about the river and how much you care about access and how you're listening to people, like the people that I've heard talk today. I do want to make sure that we have access. And I don't want to bring a trailer down into that little area there, or even a car. I want that parking place that I've had for over 40 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm with you. I'm a paddler.
We've had about 30, 35 emails. And we, I picked out some that I think would be good to read.
I think, I think you should read all of them. I don't know why it should be your choice to pick out which ones to read and which not.
Well, because they kind of said the same thing. Now, let's read this many and then if we still want to read more, we can.
Real quick, real quick.
So if I could have my city council help.
I'm sorry, how many people are on Zoom?
Seven.
Seven, okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay, so if I can pass some out and have you all help. You want to start with that?
Do I keep, do I keep these three?
Just start reading.
Okay, all right. This is from, this is from Cochran, Mr. Cochran. Let's see. "As a former resident of Martindale, I would like to request that the council reopen access at Skull's Crossing. Keeping that access open has many benefits for those of us that fish and canoe and have been using it for decades. I think there are benefits to Martindale as well. While people could take out further downriver parks, having this area open for 15 to 20 vehicles will eliminate overcrowding in the already busy parks. As a paid parking site would also generate revenue that could go back into the other park areas that are for the residents of Martindale. People that use that access will also come into Martindale to support local businesses. My family usually takes out there to avoid the porridge of the dam along with the low-water crossing. Unfortunately, there have been people drowned at the dam in, in the years past. Being able to avoid that area with my grandkids is important to me and other families as well. Opening this area would also help underserved communities and people that cannot afford property on the river. Thanks for your consideration, Jerry Cochran." You know another one? Okay, this is Yale Wesley. "My name is Wesley Yale, I reside in Conroe, Texas. I am writing this letter today in support of reopening the Skull's parking area off County Road 103. I'm a frequent visitor to Martindale, primarily to paddle the San Marcos River. I have taken out several times the Skull's Crossing. The former parking area off Country Road 103 was a tremendous benefit to myself and many other paddlers who enjoy the river. I feel this area would continually be frequented by visitors who come for a put-in or take-out spot for canoes or kayaks. I, along with many other paddlers, big letters, bold letters, would not have a problem paying for metered parking at this area. I spend lots of money within Martindale on a variety of things to support my recreational pursuit, items such as gas, food, equipment, all are part of the cost of pursuing my passion. If these expenses are a part of the cost, then I have no problem in paying for them, especially if they contribute to the city of Martindale. I feel many other paddlers would occur, would concur with me that having accessibility to this area would keep them coming back and it would be a continuous flow of revenue for the city. I'm aware of arguments being made in favor of keeping it closed and having the area as a green space. I feel this is a piece of land, it's too small to make any significant contribution to the green space currently present along the San Marcos River. And it would be better used as an asset that generates revenue, revenue for the city. It has been my observation that weekend gatherings or large groups of people mostly occur in areas that have free access to the river. I feel the argument of these groups frequently, the parking there are unfounded based on my personal observation while paddling the San Marcos River. In conclusion, the word is getting out about the beauty and recreational opportunities the San Marcos River can provide. Industries have already capitalized on this. You have to look no further than the tubing industry. Martindale will continue to see many out-of-town visitors looking to recreate, recreate on the San Marcos River or at other locations. The question is, how will Martindale manage this tourism to benefit the city and its citizens? Okay.
I have a question about that letter.
Yes.
You mean, that's a good point. Are you, do you get eight and a quarter sales tax?
I believe we do, yes. We get, we don't get the whole amount, yes. What do we get?
We, we get about a quarter, and that's dedicated to streets. Eric, do you remember the exact detail for sales tax in the city?
20% of our total gross receipts is sales tax, those are streets. So it's about, about $20,000, $20,000 to $25,000 a year.
That certainly beats parking revenue.
Yeah, the parking revenue that might be generated in this space is probably on the order of $10,000 to $15,000 a year.
Amount of gas, okay. Do you get any of that?
No, no, that goes to the highway funds, that are separate from the city.
So that was, that was Wesley Yale. One more here. This is Jerry Bayless. "Dear Martindale City Council members, my name is Jerry Bayless. I have been a frequent visitor to your city for the last 35 years. When I discovered the San Marcos River during a canoeing class at Texas A&amp;M, I have been in love with it ever since and was glad to be a part of one of the Texas, Texas's best-kept secrets. Your town has changed a lot over the years and the river is unfortunately no longer a secret to the many revelers who have now shared it with. But the river itself hasn't changed much. It's a wonderful experience to get on it before our younger neighbors woke up and paddle the peaceful route that I have paddled so many times before. To some, the scenery along the river looks pleasant and ordinary, but as, as I paddle along, I relieve countless, I relive countless memories of the times when my children and I passed through these waters during their journey of life. I can hear the echoes of their laughter and exhilaration from the past. I can feel the cold chill of an unexpected spill. I can smell the aroma of the timeless floral lining the banks and I can see the spots on the river where tears were shed, bruises were healed, and memories were made that have lasted a lifetime. I'm still a frequent visitor to your town and your river, but with different companions, the older and grayer friends of various paddling groups that I am now with. I am thankful that you have allowed me into your city and, and on your river over the years, and I have no problem with paying for the pleasure of parking near Skull's Access to relieve those priceless memories over and over again. Thank you, Jerry Bayless, Burleson, Texas."
Thank you, that was colorful.
"Okay, dear Martindale, I'm a kayaker from the Fort Worth area. I come down to paddle the San Marcos River often and usually with friends from Dallas-Fort Worth. I like to think I'm a friend to Martindale. I encourage people to enjoy shopping and eating there along with the outdoor performances. I won't exaggerate and I claim I'm not going to Martindale anymore if you don't provide parking near Skull Crossing. I will point out that if you make it easier, I will point out that will make it easier to be in Martindale, we will, we are more likely to stick around and enjoy the lovely little town. Please work with us." "Okay, dear council members, this is, this is from Frank O'Hert. I have been paddling the San Marcos River and using the river takeout spot in Skull's Crossing for going on 40 years. I have many friends who do the same. They take out and crucial, it in and out is a practical necessity to all who paddle the river. River is crucial to the annual river cleanup when literally dozens of paddlers, paddlers spend a day taking dumpster loads of trash out of the river. I understand that a private landowner has off at parking on his or her land, but that privilege can be taken away at the owner's discretion. Concerning the argument that the parking area could be made into green space, that area approximately 300 feet by 20 feet is pretty tiny for a green space. It is bare, compacted dirt or road base, which would have to be removed before anything could grow there. It would be inaccessible anyway without a parking area. There is no shade and it is not exactly in the middle of town. Thank you for your consideration." I think that's it. And this, I have this, let me see. "I am concerned that the city of Martindale has closed, has voted to close parking at the Y and Skull's Crossing. Kayakers and canoeists have been parking there for years to launch and land their boats and have a place to park. I understand that the city decided not to allow parking there at all, even without considering a parking fee. I can speak for myself and many other kayakers and canoeists that pay, that paying a parking fee for the use of that parking and use of the river would be no burden at all. We are used to launch fees at certain boat ramps. There is no alternative to parking near that other particular launch. I urge you to please consider a fee for parking. A pay box would work well, easy to maintain and similar to unmanned public ramps. Thank you for reconsidering the skull parking."
"Dear Mayor and Martindale City Council, the purpose of this email is to express my appreciation for your public service to the city of Martindale and its residents, as well as my appreciation to you for providing access to the San Marcos River. Regarding tonight's pending land use planning discussion regarding Skull's Crossing, I would like to say that I hope a solution can be found to allow for public parking on lots, and put the big numbers. I think the city's implementation of paid parking in other river-access parking lots should be the model for Skull's also. The parking fees paid by non-city residents can be used to cover the cost of keeping the parking area clean and maintained. Boaters and fishermen have used this access point for decades with parking. And the fact that the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department has obtained a lease for river access is fantastic. Now is the time for that access to be complemented by paid parking. Having an access point without parking will make the TPWD lease less valuable to both residents and non-residents. Thank you for allowing me to contact you again with this matter and I sincerely appreciate what you do for the city and the river. And that's Alan and Sarah Holzgrah." "So this is John Hahn. I am very much in favor of the city of Martindale installing and maintaining a public parking lot at the intersection of Shoals Road and the San Marcos River and River Road, with as many parking spaces for cars as allowed under parking lot codes. However, this parking space must be limited to individual use only with all commercial use prohibited, with significant fine announced. If commercial buses of tubers cannot be prohibited from using this parking space, then no parking lot should be provided by the city." And that's someone right here in town, John Hahn, 208 Rocket Street. Susan EDA.
Eda.
Eda, is that you?
No.
"I am requesting that you reopen the parking at Skull's Crossing. It is vital for my ability to continue training Boy Scout, Girl Scout, and other groups in river paddling skills. The Spring Woods Girl Scout Canoe Group has been training on the San Marcos River since 1971. We participate in the annual river cleanups. We purchase food, drink, ice, and camping and shuttle services in Martindale. We promote it to other people. And as members of, of the Texas River Protection Association, we donated. And as members of, of the Texas River Protection Association, we donated significant amounts of money to the city of Martindale to help them buy their parkland and develop their park. In return, we were promised an improved paddler's river entrance, exit, and parking. This has not happened. We need a large straight parking area to park our trailers when teaching our classes. The river right lot is too small and too convoluted for canoe and kayak trailers to park or maneuver in. Please reopen the parking on river left at the Y at Shoals Crossing and consider adding more parking. In the long run, Martindale will benefit from the money river users will contribute to your economy. Another alternative would be to work with the power company and Texas Parks and Wildlife to create a larger takeout at their river access where the power lines just below Cotton Sea. In many other states, power companies have created many such river access points. It would also serve to reduce the congestion at Skull's Bridge. That would be right by the first line, I think that she was talking about. Um, this is from Tom, oh no, it's not from Tom. It was copied to Tom. Robert Langley. I have been paddling the San Marcos from San Marcos River Retreat to Skull Crossing for about twenty-five years. In that time, I have taught many youth paddling classes, participated in many river cleanups. You could fill a dumpster with the trash, mostly beer cans I picked up, and just paddled with my children and friends. In all that time, I have paddled the sections from Skull Crossing to Allen Bates Park exactly once, and that was because there was no parking at Skull. If there is no parking or inadequate parking at Skull, we will be forced to paddle downstream to either Allen Bates or Spencer's. This includes either running or portaging Martindale Dam. That's a hazard I would rather not deal with when teaching novice paddlers. Someday, it will rain again and the dam adds extra hazards at higher water levels. As far as paying for parking, I would rather pay for parking than have to take, use down that section below Skull. I also checked my two thousand and eleven tax return. I already paid for parking once. I was part of the group that helped pay for the park. And that was Robert Langley. Um, I had a stack left. So, um, this one's from Sonia Cook. I'm writing to request a reopening of the parking area at the Y at Skull's Crossing on the San Marcos River. It is my understanding that the Martindale City Council recently voted to close that parking area due to the belief that if the city plans to charge for parking there, paddlers would prefer that it be closed. I have paddled this section of San Marcos River many times for many years for personal recreation and as a guide for the Texas A&amp;M Outdoor Program, and I have parked and taken out at Skull's Crossing many times. Um, I would absolutely be willing to pay a fee for parking at Skull Crossing, and I believe most other paddlers of the river would be willing to do so as well. Thank you for your consideration. And that was Sonia Cook. Um, so I just have two more. Dear Martindale Council members, please reopen. And we never closed it. I think that's a misnomer.
Speak to that rumor.
It was, yeah.
It didn't come from TRB or the, I, I heard it first because people saw that it was closed.
Yeah, Landzola had closed it.
Yeah, it's off in stock. And the word was it belonged to the city of Martindale.
It does now.
Does now.
So that's how we were misinformed. Somebody closed it.
Yeah, it got closed, but then we didn't enforce parking, non-parking along Northwest River Road. We just let people park along there. But, yeah, actually, there's an ordinance that says there's not supposed to be parking along Northwest River Road. So if we are going to open the parking in the parking lot again, we would definitely
And that's, and that's gonna be homesites.
Yeah, it's gonna be homesites.
Those are gonna be homes on the other side.
They put in a, a, a request to
Subdivide.
Subdivide, so we're gonna be dealing with them. Yes.
So, Tom and Mike and Tom both alluded to this earlier, but up until recently, when y'all took over this deed from the developer, all that land was privately owned.
Yes.
And so the access to Skull historically has been by the allowance of the landowner.
Exactly.
And so the current, the current access, if we reopen parking, whether it's free or paid, would, I mean, where are they gonna access? We, you said you're not designating that as green space or as a park, but I, I think that's a prerequisite to doing the parking.
Well, it was voted on the last meeting, July the sixth, after we'd already been told that the special warranty deed, which was dated June the twentieth, which means we're already informed by, uh, Adrian and Jared that we own the property because we had a copy of it. But there's obviously some misunderstanding with regard to what that really means. And Landzola, let me finish, Mike. Landzola just did not file it like they said they were gonna do, the previous owner. Okay, they were supposed to go to the county and finish it. But to your point is they, when they acquired it, they did not like all that activity, so they fenced it off.
Right. But, but all future access, if we did
Well, we, 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 we voted to make it a park and it was shut down in the July sixth meeting.
So if we did free or paid parking, where do they go?
Right now, the, as of today, if we were to enforce with the mayor suggesting, we have not enforced the rule, the actual rules, we have not, we're not enforcing the, the no parking on the other side of the road. Technically, it was there. Someone knocked it over. Like I said, I went to go get the sign, cause I saw it knocked over, I was walking the dog. I went back with my car and someone had taken it.
Which of the four corners of the river are they supposed to access? Cause right now, the Texas Parks and Wildlife, with Skidham Michelle, that's a private thing.
Yep.
Right, on the other side of the river.
So.
So it would be on our side on what
Where the Y is.
Where the Y is.
Where it's always been.
So, but not on the duly sold residential
Yeah.
I don't know.
Let Tom speak.
It would only be on the northeast corner.
Let, let, let Tom speak.
The, uh, the rock is fine. You don't have to park. Michelle and Steve's parking lot is that side. I mean, that side is available for anybody launching canoe, kayak, or raft. And the idea would be different, be paid parking, but the access, the best access is going to be there for a while until something is built.
But I do see, I do see a majority of the people on the Guadalupe County side on Scott Jecker's land too, so it isn't just like they're in front of Michelle's sandbar there. And, and if I was a kayaker and I was trying to come in and come and take my boat and put it on a trailer and there were fifteen people sitting in the river drinking beers and playing music, I would be annoyed by that, frankly. And, 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 and so I don't know, we'll have to see in the future if Landzola or Landaval that is selling those eleven lots is gonna enforce people going on their land. There's rope swings there now.
That's private property.
But they're there anyway. Well, they're, they're crossing.
Yeah.
It's all right.
So what we're talking about, so what, what they gave to the city was the piece that is, used to be parking, that's now fenced off, and then another piece towards Martindale.
The point three.
Yeah, the green.
Uh-huh.
Almost point four, point four, point four one five.
It was not big enough to put a lot, to put a house. It's just, it's too small a lot.
Yeah.
So they just said, and if anyone's been there, you know that it's not buildable. Okay, so they just said, you guys can have it.
And then is it gonna need a buffer from the other house that's gonna be built next to it?
There's, I mean, there's no, there's no house being built here.
On the next, on the other side of the
Right here, there's no house here.
That green space though is very steep, very steep, and it's just meant for butterflies, really. That's why it's called the butterfly habitat. That's about all that could really live there.
They dominated it because part of the development agreement, you have to have some designated greens.
Yes, that's why it was done.
Well, it was, it's worth, it's worth about a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars.
Plus, I think they, they didn't wanna maintain a roadway, you know.
And as, as we talked before, there is, I see a, a, a potential of an area, right? If, like I said before, if you, if you're facing, you know, facing towards Guadalupe County on the Caldwell side, if you look at the bridge right to the left, there's a little gravel bar, we can, you can make a little access point right there. Now, the, the, the raft guys couldn't do it, but the, you know, kayakers and canoeers could access that point. And for a safety point, they would never have to get on Northwest River Road, our Skulls Road, because the old days, they used to have to cross Skull's Bridge and then put in, where you see that picture of that raft dropping in, you'd have to put in there. So it's still kind of a safety hazard, but we, I have looked at it. And there is, there is a potential right there for, to put in access.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, just real quick, I, I'm so glad Tom has his base of emailers that he sent out, and because of the information that he sent out is a reason why we got a lot of the responses the way that we did, and that is, that was the narrative that was giving. Now that the night has gone through and there's more information given, I hope that you could see, I read every single email, but this is one of the ones that I got. Please keep, keep Skull's Crossing open for kayak shuttling, even if we need a pay to park there. If you close this area permanently, permanently, the city of San Marcos will lose revenue from Waco, Dallas, Fort Worth, Houston, and many other areas since you will be closing access to one of the better parts of the river to kayak. We won't be coming to San Marcos anymore. Many of our groups help clean the river up from all the tube groups that party down the river. You will lose this benefit. It's rumored that the area is being closed due to a murder that occurred one evening sometime back. Kayakers are off the water before the evening and usually headed towards bed around that time. Closing off an area due to a one-time crime is not logical. Does the highway department close a highway and reroute it when someone is killed in a car crash? Are buildings demolished and abandoned when crime occurs? This is a sad event, but crime occurs and will continue to occur. We need to stay vigilant and cautious. Lloyd Lund.
I just need to say that as much as I respect Tom, he does not control my mind. And some of his names I know are very independent, so I don't think they just took what Tom wrote. I didn't even see what he wrote and went, I'm sorry, Tom. So I think you were talking about some people who can think of themselves.
And I would hope so.
They do. I can tell you
There, yes, and I
Do you know any of the paddlers?
Yes.
That are mentioned, I know several.
That's why I'm glad we had this opportunity.
And that's coming from them. And that's also where the bad information came about, because when we saw the fence where we've been parking for forty or fifty years, we thought it was the city.
Another thing, just transparency. We know about the deed. Do my constituents that voted me here, do they know about the deed? When they look up the lot numbers and they see on the Caldwell County CAD, what are they gonna see? Who's the owner? They're gonna see that Landaval is the owner. They don't have privy to information from the mayor. So when I talk and I'm speaking, I'm speaking from my constituents' point of view.
You know, even if it had been taken to the county even a month ago, it might not have been showed up yet because it takes a while to get put into the system, just like when we send our ordinances to American Legal, it takes months before
It took a year.
So the, the ink is not even dry.
It took a year for the dark sky to go online.
Yeah.
It took a year before they approved it because Charlie, Charlie, Charlie kept asking about it every freaking month, and it took almost just shy of a year for it to come on.
I might add to the
We sent it to him.
We could always, we always answer our open records requests or a just called City Hall. I'm always happy to help, um, identifying records.
Did you have a couple more, Jerry? That was the only one I wanted to read. Okay.
Was there more to read? You need to read all of them.
We, uh, we passed them all. Oh, okay.
Read all of them.
No, we, we spread them all out.
You don't have any more? You only had one?
Yes, I only had one.
You only have one. Okay, so mine's from Christopher. Um, team, I'm writing a request the Y Skull Road be opened for river access, even if it is paid access. This parking area was donated to the city for this purpose. It's true. And it's disingenuous to close it off. TPWD announced that Skull's property was now open, but I followed the instructions to call and text, contact to get the gate code. Sorry over there, Tom, this is gonna be a few, I never heard back. So someone, someone said they didn't get a text back. My apologies.
I think I'm done at midnight. I think I had a lot of midnight calls.
I'll give you this one. So you, okay. So Debbie Dean, referencing the Y parking at Skull Bridge area, dear Martindale City Council members, this inform you that the Team River Runner, a veteran organization of twenty-five hundred plus, twenty-five hundred plus members, requests that the parking area at the Y be reopened. Our organization, when using this area, would rather pay for parking rather than see it as an area permanently closed. Thank you for seeing the big picture. I personally lead twenty-two women veterans annually down the San Marcos River, and there are over sixty-five chapters in our organization. Please visit the Team River, she's promoting herself, teamriverrunner.org for more information about what we do. And then the last one is from, is it Far Smith? Dear Martindale City Council, I live in Houston and usually paddle San Marcos River only once a year when we hold our annual cleanup event, from Tom's place. Still, I don't think there's a, a prettier stretch of the river, of, of river in the state, and it is truly a credit that you, uh, to you, that you make it available to canoeists like me. Part of that availability is having a place to park and shuttle vehicles, which makes parking at the Y so critical. Without it, it would be difficult to indeed manage those shuttle logistics. We've enjoyed the free parking at the Y for many years, but I for one would be happy to pay a reasonable fee. I hope you would consider reopening this area, even if it means requiring parking passes or, or fees. Thank you.
I have a question real quick. How many parking spaces are there at the Y?
Uh, we counted it, it's about twenty to twenty-two parking spaces.
If, if you put in as many as we could possibly do.
That was my next question. Are those that counting cars with trailers or trucks with trailers?
No, it's just
How many trucks with a trailer can you put?
Someone with a truck that has a trailer would have to dismantle their trailer from their truck to put it in a separate parking space.
We haven't had to in the past.
But that's the thing that we're talking about, is that we would have to section it off into twenty or twenty-two different places.
There's a logistical, there's a logistical hurdle to go
That's why you shut, you go for that what, like the chief said, you make it one, you make it one way.
No, no, we're talking
No, I'm talking, no, let's just, we're talking about trailers. We're talking, we're talking about the one-way going up towards Martindale. Make it one way, and then one side would be four canoe trailers, rafts.
Unloading
Let me finish.
Okay, that's not parking though.
That is parking. Let me finish. Approximately four, probably four trailers with cars could be parking right there. Okay, that's why, that's, can I finish?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think that's just still be working.
Well, I'm just talking, that's what I, and you can quote me on Facebook. Okay, now, I, cause I said it, but that's what the, that's the advantage of shutting, of having that go to the right. You can have parking on one side of the road for the trailers to park, okay? But they'd have to pay double, unfortunately. But you would have, and you'd have a shaded spot. And I wanna go on record right now. I voted for this and I'll stand by it. And I've got you voters, I'm with you, cause I'm a voter and I'll fight like hell to get this thing through.
That's why he didn't get a permit for his deck when he was building
I gotta, you wanna start personal stuff? Go for it. Go for it.
Let's, let's calm down, please.
Is there
There's nothing to do with
Let's go for it. I got a permit. You wanna start the, the dirty laundry, go for it. Okay?
We do have a lot, several more, but I think that we've gotten kind of the gist of that, you know, people would like to see parking at the Y. It does need to be controlled. It has to be just in the parking lot if the city council votes to reopen that parking lot. Even if they don't vote to reopen that parking lot, we have to do some of these safety requirements, and so we will be further dealing with this in city council meetings. Is there anyone else who would like to speak before we close?
Do you have any questions for Rob?
And I forgot your name. Doug is from Guadalupe County. He's a boss over there. Good time to ask him.
I, yeah, I had a question. We know the road is a certain width, we know the bridge is a certain width. What, what is the rule about easements along the road? Or, or what, what, what can people use as easements in that road? Or I guess they can, because you don't want them to park in the easement.
Well, it's not an easement.
Or right-of-way.
Where's the chief at?
So right-of-way
No, he's talking about Guadalupe.
Right-of-way is, is, is what is dedicated. I actually don't know what the right-of-way with is on Skull Road, but I can get that raised.
It's not your county.
No, we're talking about
No, we're talking about Guadalupe.
Yeah.
But you can park on public property. We do, we are trying to instill like certain things where if there's any type of commercial activities, where we can, but these are all codes and regulations that we're trying to bring in. And this is tough for me, because I want to think the government should stand up for business pretty much on everything. But public safety is something that the government should be looking at.
You've got a dangerous spot right there, sir. So parking within the right-of-way is legal.
And then is there any plans to raise that bridge? Raise it up higher, because they, yeah.
I know.
Okay.
There's no parking.
Now that we have 110, there's probably less.
What's the weight limit on, on that bridge? Oh, no, no, it's later, but I think what started this is that we.
To get back to y'all and stuff.
We, we had an 18-wheeler come from Highway 80, go down Quail Run, and then was attempting to cross the Skull Bridge. And he was loaded down with bricks and rocks or whatever it was. And so it, it appeared that that truck going across that bridge was exceeding the weight limit. But, but I've seen so much more development, that's, that's going to.
That's why we passed a through-truck traffic ordinance flat a couple weeks ago.
What was strange about that truck was that he was coming from Seguin. So GPS must have given him the.
Yeah, he was, he was, he was totally turned around.
That's one of our biggest problems right now, is, is these semi-trucks going along these roads that are not built for, because a semi-truck literally is like 10,000 cars have gone over. One semi-truck is loaded down. Here's your road, like 10,000 cars have gone over.
Say something about, I think, my red. I've been doing springs cleanup since '72. And I'd say maybe the last 30 years. Man, I've left y'all a huge pile of Spencer County tires.
Yes, sir.
And when it only costs us five bucks a tire, dude, at least, y'all take them up for no charge.
Yes.
You haul off a lot of ground.
It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
I'm really, really good.
We do.
Sam, to answer your question about the right-of-way.
Yes, sir.
The plat that was recorded, it says it dedicated 60 feet of right-of-way.
And the road right now is only.
Forty-seven.
No, the road, the road on Chill.
Chill Crossing is not.
It's 16 feet of actual pavement.
Really?
I've, I've been, I measured it. It's 16 feet. That's the, that is the, on average, the whole way up. So it's really not conducive to two-way traffic. It needs to be, it needs to be at least four feet wider to do that. I prefer going up that side because the slope is so much better. And that's why I wanted that to be one-way going that way, is because it's very hard to go left and then make that right. It's too, it's very steep, and then it's a very sharp turn. So I'm hoping this solves the flow issue. But.
Thank you.
Can, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I was looking for the, for the, for Tommy a minute ago, the police chief. Is, are you the guy we talked to about potentially reducing or preventing semis from even coming down Skull Road from the other side, from 621? Or could you point us in the right direction about it?
That, that comes through the commissioner.
The commissioner, yeah.
Would be actually a good place, but I'm a good place, I'm going to, I'm going to get my car before I leave.
I mean, that's our goal, would be to eliminate, ideally, because that's what 110 is there for. I mean, 110 was built.
When you eliminate trucks going through a, a certain path, you have to make sure they have an alternate route.
Well, that's 110.
So depending on, and it all has to do with logistics and how, how trials that they have to go out of their way. So it's something that can be looked into. But it's worth starting a conversation.
Doug, actually, our chief is actually, we, we have passed an ordinance about no-three truck traffic on Quail Run. And he was talking about it would be great if we could get Guadalupe County to do the same on Skulls, no-three truck traffic. So we could have that conversation.
Right.
Okay.
It'd be safer for everyone at the bridge.
Yes, sir.
Clearly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Couldn't agree more.
Yeah.
Like I said, the fact that you guys did them already, and you're able to do that much easier than I am.
We got our side taken care of.
Fine.
Because we're a municipality.
Exactly.
And we could do can bans and, you know, alcohol and all that kind of stuff. I'll leave it at that.
It's rather frustrating sometimes the things that I can't.
I know.
The best interest of.
Jerry, do you have any comments before we close? All right, then I consider this meeting.
Mention our river.
Oh, yes, do you want to do that?
Yeah, so on, I want to say, like, here at the city, we were lucky to have a river advisory board, which we're very happy for, for everything that's going on here in the river. I would also like to indicate, you know, our night sky ordinance that we do have an effect. So I feel like as far as like environmentally, we are trying to demonstrate that we are good land stewards. Also, we have, this will be our second River Appreciation Day, where we will have the MataChinas who come for a river blessing. They will be here, there's going to be bands and an art exhibit, all river-themed, here in a building. All the vendors, all the artists will be there on Friday. And then on Saturday, we will have our River Stewart Awards that will be given out. Last year, we gave out River Stewart Awards. And so we're very happy for this event. It starts at 10:00, it ends at 3:00. And our MataChinas come from everywhere, from central Texas. Last time they came, and they actually did their dance, it did rain. I want to say, I want to say to Mike McCaffrey, my council member, I do respect them, and I do, I, I do, I, I admire him, Tom Goings, I do.